Call this meeting. Uh, could we get a roll call votes for attendance, please?
Sure. Mission Alaska. Here. Nelson.
Here.
Petrusbally. Mission Petrusbally.
I'm here.
Okay. Um, the mayor of Protiel Meyer.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
And Chairperson Lamagir.
Here. Thank you. Uh, we're going to start with a approval of a sketch plan to create twenty single-family residential lots. Legal description is Lot Two, McChesney subdivision, County Bridgeway, and southeast quarter of southeast quarter of Section Nine and northeast quarter of northeast quarter of Section Sixteen, all in T forty-five ten R eight W of the N M P M, except that portion being described as lots twenty-five through forty-eight and common ground, the Vista Terrace subdivision, Valley Number One, Town of Bridgeway. General location, generally located north and east of Terrace Drive, east of Highway five fifty. Uh, zone district residential and future development, current use vacant and one single-family residential unit. Applicant Chris Hawkins, Alpine Planning, owner Four Winds Ranch One, L L L P, Anne Bernadine C Endicott. And I will turn it over to TJ.
Good evening. Thank you much, Chair. Um, so yes, as you mentioned, we have a, this is a public hearing this evening for a sketch plan for a subdivision. What I have on the screen right now, we have a packed house here. So, uh, for those who have not been to a public meeting before, this is our general process that we'll be following this evening. So first, we'll start with staff report for myself, um, contractor planner for the town. Um, and then the planning commission, both in person and online, can follow up questions to myself about some of the presentation that we did. Um, and then we'll follow that with, uh, the applicant presentation and potentially questions from the, uh, commissioners to the applicant. And then we'll open up public, or public comment portion of it. And that's where, uh, those in the audience can, uh, come up, speak for, uh, a period of time. And we ask that, uh, you know, keep it civil, keep it quick, concise. If somebody prior to you made the same comment, just say ditto, or I agree with my neighbor over there. Um, there are a lot of comments, so we're trying to do that. Don't want to minimize the comments or the input, but please keep it short and concise and not too much. Um, and then we'll close the public comment portion of this, the hearing and open it up for, uh, planning commission discussion. They can discuss amongst themselves, uh, they may provide some follow-up conversations, but at that point, we're trying to prevent additional public comments. Um, so just be aware, please make your comments the best you can during that public comment portion. And then, uh, there'll be a motion and a vote at that point. So, uh, again, we'll have this slide up throughout, but, uh, just wanted to make sure everybody kind of understood the, the order of the day and the procedures. Okay. So start with staff report. Um, so just by way of background, uh, here's the, the subdivision plan or the, the sketch plan. Um, it is, there are two portions, uh, that they're comprised to make this Four Winds subdivision sketch plan. That's Lot Two, McChesney subdivision, uh, consisting of thirty-three point oh nine acres. Oh, didn't see my mouse. That's this portion here. Um, and then another nine point nine five acres, which is, uh, we're referring to as the Endicott property, which is a portion of the overall, and it's outlined here in the white dashed, uh, line. So when we refer to the, uh, Four Winds sketch plan or Four Winds subdivision, we're referring to those two portions together, parcels together totaling forty-three point oh four acres. As mentioned, the property does have, uh, two zoning districts. One is R residential district and the other is F D, uh, future development. Um, just some housekeeping kind of things. All application materials were submitted. The public hearing has been notified as required by the municipal code. Um, so that gets us a little bit more into the background. It's most everyone's aware, this, uh, project has been going on for a little bit here. And so over on the left-hand side, uh, left column are the meeting dates. Um, May, June, August, and earlier in January, we had some continuances to this evening. And, um, at the, uh, August thirtieth meeting, uh, the planning commission provided some, some specific feedback, uh, which is on the right hand over here to the seven items. Um, and you'll see, because we're going to be diving into those a little bit more during the staff report. So, um, that's, uh, just want to give that a little bit of background there. So as I've mentioned, uh, kind of the project summary, the, uh, the proposal is for twenty single-family lots. Um, the lots, lot sizes range, uh, the smallest one being point nine nine acres, so just about one acre. Uh, there is an internal, what we're referring to as a lollipop roadway. Uh, you see it enters, comes around, and then goes back out. Um, the project that's proposed right now will need some, uh, subdivision design waivers. So we'll talk a little bit more about those through the, the, uh, presentation. Um, and, uh, there's just, uh, well, twelve point seven four acres of open space being proposed. That is, uh, the portion on the west side. If you can see my mouse and follow it around, it's the west portion, uh, of the, the property, uh, adjacent to five fifty, and then as Terrace Drive comes up and bisects that portion. Um, hiking and mountain bike trail is being proposed. This, that's the brown, uh, probably hard to see the color, but this, uh, the switchback line, uh, through the open space is a dirt trail. Um, the project is also proposing, uh, water extensions, uh, water line, uh, water main extensions, some improvements to the, the storage tanks up in this area, as well as, um, onsite wastewater treatment systems, that's O W T S. So you'll see in that, uh, that shorthand throughout the presentation too, so it's basically septic systems. Um, so that's about project summary. And going into the analysis of, uh, listen, so first of all, there was a much more detailed staff report. I'm not going to go through all the details of the staff report. Those were published, they're online. Uh, we can talk more details if needed, but I'm going to hit the high points in this presentation and places that I have, uh, that, that told green update means that that is a, basically an update in the, the materials since the last time presented. Um, or at least an update in the analysis and the information being proposed this evening. So first, uh, what we're doing is looking at the master plan. That's the two thousand nineteen Town of Ridgeway master plan is adopted. Um, this property is, uh, uh, the zone, the zone classification allows for, uh, dense uh, density of point one to one dwelling unit per acre. Um, the gross density of this property or this project is point four six units per acre. So it's within that threshold. However, what you'll be hearing in a bunch of different ways is, uh, this evening is the cumulative impact of density. Um, and that, yes, while it's within the, um, the threshold, there are other considerations that planning commission, uh, should take into account when evaluating the, the development. Um, and so therefore, we feel that the cumulative impact of the density needs to be evaluated and understood uh, through the sketch plan process and what that impact is going to be across the board. Uh, the maximum density, sorry, the maximum height for the master plans is two and a half stories, and that is consistent with the narrative, uh, so that will be determined in the, uh, building permit time. Primary uses in the master plan identified as, uh, single-family homes, that's, uh, what's happening there. Um, in this development application. Uh, secondary uses are also ag and ranch use, parks, open space. And I say that because then it seems to be consistent with the proposal, with some open space requirements. Um, uh, clustering the development as residential homes in, in one area to preserve some other elements uh, is encouraged, so that seems to be consistent with the application as well. Goals and policies, the staff report goes into a lot more detail on, uh, various policies and goals. Uh, so don't want to get into all of those, and we'll highlight a few of them here, though. One being the impact of environmentally sensitive areas. There are two elements that I want to talk about, one being the wildlife habitat. Uh, C P W, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, was referring this application and providing comments. Um, the applicant has addressed most of those comments, uh, through Platteau or, uh, in the narrative at this point, and what we'll want to do as the project progresses, make sure that those are carried through in, in an enforceable way. Um, one element that I wanted to bring to your attentions, the prohibition of perimeter fencing. The note, uh, that, that component is a little bit different than the others, such as, um, uh, you know, keeping disturbed areas or minimizing disturbance areas, it's like that, the developer has control over the plaque. Prohibition of perimeter fencing, that's more of a property owner component. So what we wanted to do is make sure that we're identifying that as a need moving forward. Um, uh, and it should be a note on the, the plat, uh, to clearly identify that. Um, the developer has also offered, uh, conservation easement uh, in exchange for the impact that this property might have on the, uh, the, the wildlife habitat. Um, however, at this time, the applicant, uh, and the development team hasn't disclosed the, the exact location of that. And so, uh, staff doesn't feel that we can decouple or uncouple the impact that this property, that this development is going to have on wildlife habitat and the mitigation strategy. Um, so that's just a, a component there that, uh, the, the impact is identified and agreed upon, but mitigation isn't necessarily tied to this application or the approval. Next is the impact, uh, oh, sorry, the, the steep slopes. Um, so the applicant has, uh, suggested that twenty percent is not necessarily steep slopes, which is true, general best practices when you look at development, it's, it's thirty percent. But the, uh, master plan clearly identifies twenty percent as steep slopes and being a, uh, environmentally sensitive areas. So this snippet that you're seeing here is from the master plan. And, uh, unfortunately, this is the area right in the fold of it, so couldn't get all of that. But, um, you can see that the area that, uh, is being proposed for a subdivision this evening is impacted, uh, significantly by these areas. Um, another comment or a discussion that was brought up with the planning commission in, uh, August was the, uh, initial growth boundary. And I believe at that time, it was basically requested that staff do a little bit more digging in to understand what that, uh, means and how it applies here to other developments in the, in the town. So we did that, and, and where we've kind of, uh, where staff has, um, planted on this is that the I G B identifies areas where utilities and infrastructure, um, may not be available. Sorry, um, uh, it's, it's outside of the urban growth area, but areas that, uh, that some of the utilities and infrastructure may not be available. Um, however, because this property in particular is already annexed and zoned in the town, the zoning and subdivision regulations do apply to the property, so we definitely acknowledge that. Um, however, for this, when property is being developed, public interviews, services, and infrastructure may be a limiting factor that can, that should be, uh, considered through development applications, uh, to determine what the appropriate level of development, um, as we are requested. So, yes, it's outside of the urban growth area, but yes, it's in the town. But yes, these are considerations, viable considerations that the town, specifically the planning commission, can evaluate while evaluating and considering an application. Um, in particular, these considerations, um, come to the provisions of public services, the long-term costs to the town and the risk of the development might have on the current and future residents. So when the development request is within the, the initial growth boundary, additional scrutiny should be applied when evaluating the impacts of such development. So that's kind of the framework that, um, we were looking at this application in particular and the, uh, application of the, uh, initial growth boundary. Okay. Okay, so that's the master plan. Now moving on to land uses. So currently, the property is all vacant. Um, as mentioned, twenty single-family homes are being proposed. Those properties are ranging from almost three acres to one, with an average lot size of one point one seven acres. Um, uh, the update is in the accessory dwelling unit, is one of the conversations in previous meetings, would have to do with density, that if you have twenty single-family homes plus twenty accessory dwelling units, that's a significant difference in, in density. And so the applicant has come back and, um, uh, is now removing the allowance of E D U's. And so what we're suggesting is that, uh, it's an interesting statement, no must clearly be waived. Uh, no must clearly be placed on the plaque. Um, let's see, the, it, it, you know, this is one of those elements that we'll have to carry on through, uh, to make sure that it's clear that E D U's cannot be, uh, allowed in this area. Open space, um, as mentioned, about twelve point five. Just under thirteen acres of, uh, open space or, uh, lands being dedicated as open space. This area includes a trail to Highway five fifty. Staff does have concerns that this trail, uh, encourages more bikes and pets to congregate at a already known dangerous intersection. Um, developer has suggested or, or, uh, stated that they're, they're willing to contribute to an overpass or underpass. Um, but at the same time, this isn't, staff is not sure if that is ever going to come about, uh, and, and be realized in this area. Um, it's a concept that needs to be discussed with C dot and other stakeholders. Um, and so, uh, essentially, staff is suggesting an additional analysis and discussion, um, be had with the development team to make, to provide a meaningful connection. Um, and what I mean by meaningful connection is that if it's being touted as a benefit to the community, that connection, like that trail is, it should be a meaningful connection. And, um, so we wanted to have a little bit more opportunity to discuss that with the applicant and development team about how to make those meaningful connections to adjacent neighborhoods. Another, um, issue that are concerned that was brought up previously was the visual impact. So kudos to the development team. They went out and did a story poll analysis using a thirty-five foot poles, placed them on the property, went around and, and took photos of that area. Photos, uh, were included in the packet. Um, however, the photos, um, there, there was no key, if you will, to know where those photos were taken from, um, exactly where the, the story polls were and where they were located on the property to understand the actual impact um, and what lots were impacted. So, um, we have been in conversation with the development team on this item and just want additional more, uh, additional time to make sure that we fully understand that and then are able to come up with, uh, strategies to make sure that, uh, the impacts are being mitigated. Development team has agreed to doing development standards on a few lots. Um, and we just want to confirm that those are appropriate and, uh, kind of located on the properties that are, um, having a visual impact on neighbors. Um, dimensional standards. So these are the dimensional standards, it's like, well, it's underlying zone district. The, uh, column in the, it's required is what's required by, uh, the R zone district. Um, column all the way on the right is what's provided. Um, and at this point in the development process, we wouldn't anticipate having all of those be addressed. Through our future processes, where most of those could be, the things that we will look at, minimum lot sizes, looking at block coverage and the ability to meet the other dimensional standards. And so in that case, the lots as proposed do appear to meet, though. The ones that we can confirm are meeting the, uh, dimensional standards, and the ones that we can't confirm appear to be able to be, to meet the dimensional standards with future applications or permanent applications. Hmm. So next, uh, we're moving on to access as a topic. And so there are a few things that we want to talk about here that were brought up previously. First, access is, uh, this subdivision, when I say this subdivision, Four Winds subdivision is off of Terrace Drive. Um, Terrace Drive and the, uh, Vista Terrace subdivision as a whole has one access point onto Highway five fifty. So that was a big discussion point previously as well. And so the applicant has gone back and, uh, evaluated a emergency access easement alignment. Um, and, and it's hard to see potentially, especially here in the audience, but, um, a, a proposed alignment was met or provided. Um, and it's, uh, weaving along an existing, um, roadway, uh, primitive roadway that extends to the, uh, to the west, I'm sorry, to the east. Um, and connects to, sorry, that kind of road twelve. Kind of road twelve.
Intersection twelve, well, they.
Um, and, and with the application, the, or with the updates to the application that were provided in the packet, um, the development team did provide a, uh, an emergency access easement um, and written confirmation that the property owner is amenable to that easement. Um, there are, however, a few other concerns that the town has that we want to address, or we would like to be able to address before moving forward. One of them, making sure that there's year-round access on that. Um, emergencies don't just happen in the summer. Um, the other is maintenance and improvement agreements, um, or at least understanding of what improvements may need to happen at different points of that road uh, to ensure that it's passable and functional, uh, year-round, and then it's going to be maintained, uh, in perpetuity as well. Uh, internal, so now shifting internal circulation, and this is to the roadway inside the Four Winds subdivision. Uh, the proposed roadways inside have a twenty-four foot wide, within a sixty-foot right of way. Um, that is adequate. The, um, since the last time, I believe, uh, emergency access was, uh, emergency access easement was added to lots fifteen and sixteen, it was not there previously, uh, so that, that was, uh, added. The road standard waivers, and I won't get too much more into these other than identifying some of them, because we don't have, and this is just virtue of where it is at this time. Uh, we don't have all of the information from a design standpoint to understand what standards may or may not be met at this time. Well, what we're saying here is that any design standards, so this is from Section seven four seven. Um, excuse me, subdivision standards, then talk about road cross-sections, materials, grades, things of that nature, uh, will need to be, uh, requested for a waiver, uh, from the town council. Um, and so those, at least at this moment, what we're aware of are the lollipop design, uh, because as we are, uh, evaluating that, we would classify that as cul-de-sac, it says, one point of access. Um, and then the gravel roads, the town code does require paved roads, um, curb gutter sidewalk. So with the paved roads, uh, town code does require curved gutters and sidewalks. Um, so those are what we know at the moment, uh, we're not sure of all of them. So that is one element that, uh, yeah, I don't, well, we just want to be aware of, and, and what we're suggesting, staff suggesting is that, um, town council needs to consider these waivers prior to the, the, the plac, so that the applicants don't go through, uh, extensive design without confirmation that, that those waivers are approved. Um, roadway treatment is what I just mentioned. Uh, that's the paved roads is what the code requires. The proposal is for gravel roads. Um, in this particular case, given the limited, um, traffic that's anticipated to be on this road, uh, staff is agreeable to this request, uh, also because of the rural nature of it. So therefore, staff's also amenable to the, uh, curved gutter and sidewalks, uh, if you will. However, um, related to the pedestrian connections and sidewalks, um, as I mentioned, roadways are required to have sidewalks because of the rural nature and the gravel design. It makes sense to not have traditional sidewalks, but staff wants to make sure that there's, um, uh, safe, efficient pedestrian connection throughout the project. Um, and the applicant at this time is requesting that the roads function as sidewalks. Um, and so I think staff just wants some additional time to work through that, understand exactly what that means, and make sure that it is, uh, truly safe and efficient for the future residents of this area. Um, the next access topic is Highway five fifty. Not going to really belabor this one, so I think everybody understands a lot of it. Um, but this project does trigger additional improvements to Highway five fifty. The applicant and development team are not, um, arguing that point. Um, however, the, the level and what exactly is going to be required, we're not sure of yet. Um, traffic impact statement is being reviewed right now by C dot and their consultants. And, uh, there's a good dialogue going back between the town, the applicant, development team, and C dot, um, on that. Um, so again, staff is in a position where we would like some additional time to let that, um, go through another review and make sure that we understand what improvements are going to be required. Um, and I guess I'll kind of cut to the chase today. You know, you'll see so far, there's a lot of public improvements that are unknown at this time. One of the points of the sketch plan are to really understand what those improvements are and what, uh, because the next step in the process is construction documents essentially. So there's very little, uh, time between an extensive amount of, um, design and planning, uh, conceptual design for infrastructure. So we're trying to get as far along in understanding as possible with the magnitude, uh, of all of these, these requirements. Um, parking, that is a simple one. They're meeting all the off-street parking requirements for the single-family home, so that is good. Okay. Water, now moving on to utilities. So utilities, there are a few utilities in here that we're going to be talking about, spend most of the time on water and said, ever. Um, so staff has made aware of, of, of this, the terrace water and sewer agreement nineteen eighty-one. The questions are still out there of whether the obligations are outstanding at this time and who's responsible for those. Um, those might have impacts on, uh, this project and who's responsible for what. Um, uh, so, and then when it, when the documents that were submitted with the sketch plan, um, did not include a few items, again, as I mentioned, just trying to understand, uh, more clearly the, the design and how this project is going to lay out. So first, we, the, the application didn't include how the water lines will connect to the existing, uh, water tank, uh, you know, horizontal design, if you will, right? So not plan profile, look at slopes, but, you know, where is, how's it getting there? Um, and then the concept layout of the new water tank. Uh, there's been a couple of different, uh, iterations of that, we've had some discussions. Uh, staff has suggested that an additional tank may not get the fire flows that are needed, and maybe it's a larger tank. Um, and I'm not necessarily saying that that is the answer, but we're, there are still some of these bigger items that still need to be worked through, uh, to understand what that could look like on the ground. Uh, excuse me. Um, and then lastly, how the, uh, site of function, uh, is, you know, right now, it, it, it appears that the water tank, and I apologize, I'm not even sure, I think there's like an easement up there, I think it, um, you know, we haven't seen. An easement up there, I take it, um, you know, we haven't seen what that looks like. Cause it, because it's an easement, is this within those easement, that easement agreement? Uh, do we need to get more easement, right, those types of things? Um, haven't seen uh, as part of the, the smittle yet. So therefore staff is uh, feeling that there needs to be additional time to, to review that information. Evaluate it and, and work through the conceptual sign of how that is going to function, the water system. Um, as far as the sewer system, uh, you know, we all know that up here is somewhat practical for a sewer service. Uh, the, the, the public sewer, sanitary sewer lines to be extended up here. However, um, I think it's, and this was a concern that planning commission brought up. Uh, at one of the meetings in, the meeting back in August, to evaluate some additional uh, feasibility of the sewer line. And again, kudos to the development team, they, they looked at a couple of different alignments. Um, and I believe they actually have one submitted, I don't know if it's. Um, so there will probably be an update on this, uh, this evening, um. But uh, you know, this alignment here, you're kind of uh, trying to. Line yourself, five fifty is over on the left there, the green lines down at the bottom are existing sewer lines over in the condos. And where you can see the blue line on the bottom, that's in Ball Road and it kind of comes up the hillside. And just full disclosure, that right there was just TJ trying to create a concept layout. That is not a design, not uh, approved, not even, uh, you know, it was just a, a. Concept for discussion purposes, so that is not necessarily going to happen, but we wanted to get a, a concept for the development team to evaluate. Also, um, in the application materials that were provided in the packet though. You do have a, a cost analysis and uh, evaluation of going down Terrace Drive. To five fifty and connecting down through five fifty, uh, so we requested that the applicant take a look at this alignment as well. And again, the whole impetus for this is that the standard in the towns that all new development. Should connect to public utilities that includes water and sewer. Therefore, I think it's being good stewards of these services, long-term uh, stewards. Of the services being provided, to make sure that all options are being evaluated, um, and, and um. Uh, considered before just waiving or uh. Not requiring such connections. Um, so then lastly, the last main bullet there on the bottom is if the septic systems are settled on. Uh, there are some additional components that need to be evaluated, excuse me, and considered and, and worked through. Um, and these are very conceptual, but the town doesn't have sewer regulations, OWTS regulations, so. How do we make sure that that's happening, who's permitting it, who's inspecting it, who's approving it, approving it? Um, what are the connection requirements? So when, you know, we all know that at some point, when sewer comes up here, the properties will connect, but. Little bit more detail on what that means, and the reason is that the septic systems have to be designed in such a way that they can connect relatively easily. Right, you don't put the, the outflow in the back, that's, that is, you've cost extra thousands of dollars to that future homeowner. Um, so we want to do it in a methodical way. And then lastly, uh, GID agreement, that's general improvement agreement, uh, or general improvement district, my apologies. Um, there are notes going back on previous plaits saying that, uh, the property owners agree to uh. Participate in a special district or general improvement district at such time the town desires. So we would probably want to talk through what that's going to look like, uh, agreement wise, uh, for this particular product, property, um, moving forward. Oh, I think I'm almost done, so bear with me just a little bit longer. Uh, so the estimated infrastructure costs. Um, we did get a, a cost estimate, uh, at least the narrative of that. Um, but as I discuss, as discussed multiple times here this evening and, and I've mentioned. There are significant infrastructure improvements that are warranted by this proposed development. And what we really want to do as staff is understand exactly what those requirements are, the magnitude of those. So that when we get to the design, um, the project is, is feasible, uh, to be able to move forward. And so we want to get to a point where we're understanding from staff standpoint, what those requirements are. What the town is going to be taking on ownership and maintenance of long term, and then what the initial capital uh, expense are going to be. So yes, those are all things that will certainly come with the preliminary plat. But again, be, given the magnitude of them, uh, given the constraints of the property. Um, we want to make sure that, that there's a solid understanding before moving forward. So, public comments, so that's it on the analysis. Take a deep breath there, sorry for running through all that, um, that's a lot. So, public comments, we, uh, but you, you can see that the audience participation, we've received a lot of public comments. Uh, through the multiple pro- uh, public hearings that we've had in this project. For this particular project, or sorry, this particular hearing, we have received six uh, written comments. Those were all included in your uh, packet. Um, there, there were one, maybe, gotta think there were two. One being, uh, one being a letter that was added from a, a property owner as well as an update from the applicant team. That provided to the staff, uh, into your Dropbox, uh. After the staff report was sent out, I don't exactly when those were, so those are in the record as well. In addition, there are two, two things that we did not put in your packet. One was a, a six-second video of the elk herd uh, on the hillside indicating the, the. Past the travel of that, uh, the, uh, that herd and, and in the packet, there were still. The other being, um, uh, a USGS report that talked about landslide hazards. Um, uh, this prod- property or this project, sorry, will be sent to Colorado Geological Survey. Uh, which is the agency of the state that reviews uh, such hazards. And so we will be going through there and any hazards will be identified through that agency. At the proper time before uh, development can proceed, so that would happen with the preliminary plat. Um, so just want to let you know that those two other elements were received. But for those reasons, we didn't uh, include them, oh, and we can't put a video in the written packet. Uh, but we didn't put those in the step, the Dropbox either. So, with all of that being said, uh, here's the staff recommendation. That, that staff is recommending that the planning commission continue the application for at least two, two months. Um, and, and these, and the reason for that. Uh, is that staff and the development teams work on some of the items that we mentioned, in, in particular, these items here that I list. Uh, those include the cumulative impact of the development. Uh, the density is what that one's getting at, the visual impact, environmentally sensitive areas being uh, adequately. Mitigated, um, conservation easement proposal, uh, make sure that that's adequate for the impact. Um, discussing the meaningful trail, of meaningful trail connection. Further understanding and analyzing the secondary emergency access uh, out to the west, that's how the east. The safe and efficient pedestrian connection connectivity within the subdivision. Uh, understanding the road standards that may or may not be able to be met, um, and what waivers are going to be requested. The results of C dot's review of the traffic imprint, uh, impact statement, conceptual design of the water su- system. Um, more evaluation and analysis between the public sewer connections and the septic systems. Um, updated supplemental materials, there've been significant impact uh, updates to the proposal. And, and we want to make sure that the uh, materials in the, the packets and, and being approved are, are up to date and, and relevant. Um, and then last being the project costs, that's an infrastructure, uh, costs that we were just talking about. So with that, here's a recommended motion, um, that we would have with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the planning commission has. Uh, now that I know the applicant, the development team are here to give a presentation as well.
Thanks TJ.
Why, you're welcome.
John? Uh, let's see, we got Jack on Zoom. And Jennifer, do you guys have any questions for TJ at the moment?
I think I've got a question if it's appropriate.
Let's see.
TJ, um, I'm a big proponent of the ADUs. And I'm wondering if the elimination of the ADUs was a, was something that staff came up with or the applicant came up with.
So staff's position earlier was, uh, that. Basically by allowing ADUs, we thought you doubled the density, so therefore we were looking at it at that level, right? It's that cumulative impact of density, if you will. Um, the applicant team came back, uh, and, and removed. Um, ADUs from the project. Um, and I would, beyond that, I would, I would allow the applicant to address that comment or question in their presentation.
Well, I'm in favor of the ADU, so I want to talk that longer. Then on the steep slopes, I'm, I went out there this past weekend and drove around and I counted fourteen houses that are on slopes. That are steeper than what, what we're proposing as steep slopes. I'm kind of, I don't quite understand how there can be a house on the steep slope right next to the subject property. And uh, another twelve or fourteen houses on slopes that are much steeper than this, and that we're concerned about that, I don't understand that logic.
So first, uh, all development applications are reviewed against the coast standards that are applicable at that time. So I don't know what was or was not approved previously and what conversations were tied to those. Um, what I do know is that now the town through a master plan process has identified twenty percent slopes. As uh, environmentally sensitive areas that should be uh, minimized. Um, or, or impact on those should be minimized. Um, I think we can all agree that slopes of twenty percent, even up to thirty percent, even beyond, can surely be engineered. Uh, to be safe, but there are some impacts to those. And so what we're requesting through, what we're suggesting at this time and where staff is coming from is that we just need to better understand that. Um, how does this, how does this subdivision layout overlay with those sensitive areas? And where are those impact areas and, and what's being done to mitigate it?
So that those houses were built before the current master plan took effect properly.
Right, yeah.
I think that's all my questions for now, thank you.
Uh, is the developer prepared to present?
Yes, I'm sure. Thank you very much. Good evening to everybody, appreciate the opportunity to present our application. It's been quite a process here. We've accomplished a great deal pertaining to the main issues that the planning commission asked us to address. And I want everyone to remember, I, I have right in here the municipal, originally municipal requirements for sketch plan. We're so far beyond sketch plan with our submittals and our back and forth with staff and the continuances. It's uh, it's incredible how far we are beyond that. But with that said, we took a positive approach to. The overwhelming concern that the board had in August was the need for a secondary emergency access easement. Probably thought by most for sure to be undoable, it's uh. It's a huge safety issue for the existing Vista Terrace community. And uh, an appropriate ask by the commission. What we've done, we're very proud of. And they also asked us to solve this not only for Four Winds, but for the existing Vista Terrace residents. Which, which hasn't been addressed by the current community or the town, and that's okay. We took it on. It was a monumental task. It's a safety issue that I'm passionate about safety and uh. The, the solution was negotiated with the current property owner, Cheryl Endicott, Bernadine Endicott's daughter. The executor of the uh, will. And if Chris could put it up there for us, I'd appreciate it. It, it's an existing ranch road, it's been there for a really long time, it's in Orange. And it basically comes up Terrace Drive. Comes right up to it and loops around, our project is over here to the west. And it comes right to the cul-de-sac if you've been up there, and it actually goes across three of her parcels. There was a lot of deliberation, a lot of negotiation. It goes a little bit to the north, it comes all the way out to twelve and twelve A, which we really wanted to. Which we really wanted to get done and go to the east, because from the standpoint of what made sense, we didn't want to come out to five fifty. And have a cluster out there. So we've, we've walked it, we've walked, we've, you could drive a Toyota Prius on it right now. We've got, we've got to clear a little gravel, but it, it's an unbelievable road. I mean, it, it's been there for a long time, the grade is exceptional. And, and we're excited to go out there with uh, town staff and, you know, review it, which obviously is going to be required. But it's, it solves the issue and we've supplied our. Documentation with the property owner to grant this easement. It's, it's cost substantial, it's cost our team substantial money and. We're proud of it because uh, it, it delivers safety to the existing community as well as the proposed plan. And it was the number one issue that I didn't know if we could come up with it, but I'll tell you what. It's uh. It's, it's completely viable. It's going to require minimal improvement best. So I'm anxious to discuss that with the planning commission during the question period. And I would ask for open deliberation, so I can respond to any questions you have, you have, but. I think it was the overwhelming concern and uh, to be able to deliver it to you here six months later. And is uh. I'm proud to do it. The second most important concern, moving on, was the intersection of five fifty and Terrace Drive. An access permit from C dot is not required at the sketch plan level. But we've gone ahead and done not one traffic impact study, but two, we've recounted. C dot holds the hammer on the access permit and we're going to adhere to whatever they want. There again, this wasn't addressed by the Vista Terrace community or the town. We're going to pay for it and put in a turning lane or whatever's required for access there. That on top of the emergency egress easement. Are, are Herculean, Herculean deliveries that we're proud of and. It's, it's uh. It's a vast, it, it's a fantastic improvement to the town and safety of the intersection there. We're waiting for the final review comments, let's see, I think TJ mentioned that. But again, where we're at is well beyond sketch, but this, this is something that's required. At preliminary plat, like the multitude of what TJ went over. Those details and the engineering gets carried out during preliminary plat. We, we're, we're far beyond sketch plan requirements, far beyond. Density is another thing I wanted to talk to, could you mention about. Our project density at twenty homes is fifty percent less, fifty percent less dense. Than the forty-two homes that qualify to be placed on the forty-three acre tract that our project is to be placed on. That, that's, that's unbelievable, our project is marginally profitable at twenty homes. We've cut it substantially from what could be put there and, and previous applications. We're so far beyond this, that forty-three acres also includes thirteen. We're so far beyond this. That 43 acres also includes 13 acres of open space. We've cut the eligible density by 50%. I think it's a it, it can't be cut anymore. It's, it's not doable. It's not feasible with any less density. I can't deliver an emergency egress access with my team and a turning lane and cut any more density. The town needs to encourage clustered density and development within its limits. It's a 1.8 square mile town. Central sewer versus septic. I'm going to let the turn, the team touch on this, but the extension of the town sewer line and required infrastructure does not exist to location of our proposed development. We have a feasibility study that we've already delivered. Fantastic job by our engineer. Additional explorations of what TJ possibly proposed, that, that again is, is far down the line. If we want to look at another the feasibility of another line, the, the easements that are available are not large enough for sewer. We, we can't do it. It's not, it's not financially viable. The, the existing developments, Vista Terrace and River Sage have septic tanks. It's clear that we need to be treated fairly. We did a soil study at the request of the planning commission. The soil is exemplary for septic. The plat notes that are on Machesney 2 plat support septic use on the property. We've discussed that multiple times with town staff and legal. As I said, the easements required to extend the sewer are not of adequate size. The cost is prohibitive. We will agree to be obligated to hook up to the sewer line at a future date and construct the septic tanks in such a way that there will receive the hookup. And the same thing should be mandated to the Vista Terrace. If septic goes up, if, if the sewer laterals are put up there for the good of the environment, the entire town, everybody should have to hook up to that. I would hope that that would, it, it'll be a property value enhancement for every but we're, we're certainly willing to hook up to the sewer line at a future date. Staff has previously condoned septic for this plan. The town staff recommended and clearly documented that it was okay. But we went ahead and did a soil test anyhow and the soil test is perfect for septic. And we did it in such a way that we didn't destroy sage. It's important to us to not destroy the sage habitat. We want to zero escape. We don't want to have lawns to be watered. So we weren't going to dig probe holes all over the 33 acres. It was strategic where we conducted the engineered soil study. They're ideal. Visual impact was another thing that you tapped this with looking at. We conducted a story pole review and found absolutely no skyline breakage, zero, commission members. Even if we were to have to adhere to the county regs, we don't break the skyline. We don't even come close. There's homes in Vista Terrace and there's homes in River Sage that break the minimal ridge lines. But there's Log Hill to the west and north. There's the Rat Ridge and there's Miller Mason. There we don't begin to break the skyline and there's only four out of 20 lots that are up on the ridge that will extend and break the ridge on. But there's not, there's not a standard that, the regulation we have to adhere to in the town or Ridgeway. But even if it were the county rig, we don't in any way infringe on. And again, I can't state enough fairness and equality. River Sage, Vista Terrace homes extend above the secondary ridge lines. It's clear to everyone driving north from your rail on 550 or south towards Ridgeway, what the existing homes do. Initial growth boundary, I'm going to let Chris handle that. He's got a lot of good data on that. The wildlife impact. We talked about this before. I've got the letter here in front of me from Kelly Crane that we requested to do the analysis of the wildlife impact. She states categorically, Colorado Parks and Wildlife supports development within the city limits rather than ex-urban development. We feel that the following measures within your development plan will help reduce the impacts of wildlife. They support our plan. This 43 acres is not within the severe winter range. A piece of it maybe, that's a range that's, that's, they take two of the most severe winters out of 10 years. This is a corridor that I believe some of the residents have a picture of elk moving through. Sure. They move through, they water down at the river. That's why there's so many hit out on the road. This is not heavy habitat. It's not habitat. Habitat exists in Millionaire's Valley, up at Billy Creek. This is in the town or Ridgeway. And there's a great demand. And, and there has to be support for development and density in the town limits because it's so small. That's as much as I'll say about that. I mean, there's so many projects that haven't in any way been scrutinized that are going on with regard to wildlife impact. Here's what I'd like to say to the planning commission. And it's, it's from my heart and soul and it's where we stand as a team. We've exceeded the Ridgeway Municipal Code's requirements for sketch plan approval. Our intention is to partner with the town. If you give us a fair opportunity to carry out this project, we'll make the town proud and I'll be behind the project 100%. I live here on Iman Ridgeway until I die. Our plan is progressive with our solar. It's sustainable. It, it's a project that deserves fair, objective consideration. We'll work with the town staff without question through the preliminary plat process and the final process, but 99.9, 110% of what staff is recommending that they want to review prior to sketch plan approval is unreasonable from the standpoint that we, we've met the every criteria. We're so far under preliminary plat. It's unbelievable. We're just asking for fair consideration, advancement to the next stage, and we will work with staff as directed by the planning commission, town council to achieve an outstanding project. I'm going to turn it over to Chris and thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chris Hawkins with Alpine Planning. So I've got this projected up on the screen. I'm going to try not to be too redundant with what Eric said. So again, we're just going through your concerns raised meeting. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail than Eric did. First off, on highway access, CDOT has jurisdiction. This is what it says in your code. That's it. So to look at additional design details for that is beyond what this code citation says. It says CDOT has jurisdiction and they issue permits for the access code. So those improvements aren't dictated by town staff or this process. It's by CDOT and that's embodied in the code. The traffic study that was submitted, we understand there's probably going to be some sort of center, A cell, B cell lane. We don't know what that is. There's plenty of right of way in there to do it. It's relatively flat to do it and my client's willing to do it. So that's great. That's going to help existing Vista Terrace owners as well as this proposed project. So that's a, a big ask, you know, at least a big gift for the project. Understand, we're probably not going to get sketch plan approval tonight, but at least when we do, having that be a condition that we get a CDOT access permit, we totally understand that that would be there. So as far as the pedestrian safety, we just proposed that trail because there's an existing BLM trail down to the river trail, right on the other side of the highway. Don't understand the history of that. Don't know why it was put there, but it's there. And so we just proposed that as an amenity. We'd like to keep it, but I think CDOT's got a way into that to see, do, is it safe to keep it? Or not overall. And that offer to help fund the overpass or underpass, that was, given what staff has said, that's a much bigger can of worms because there's a bigger planning process for the area to go through and stuff like that. And I think it just really is impossible to try even predict where and when that will go in. So
Discuss it, make a commitment to contribution. Let's let it contribute to something.
Okay. But again, CDOT may or may not keep that BLM access. We don't know. And we're just going to have to have that conversation. The secondary emergency access, I just want to make it clear that this was intended for summer emergencies only. This was not intended as a year round emergency access wildfire number one hazard in the summer. What other emergencies would be there that you'd have to get out? And you can't get out either northbound or southbound from the current intersection, especially with the huge lanes that are going to be there. So it was never intended to be this year round ingress egress. And I just wanted to state, this is just an add-on. The town approved the annexation and zoning of all of Vista Terrace without any secondary emergency access. So this is an existing condition that was there when the town annexed and zoned the property. We did provide proof of the owner approval. That was in an email that was sent to TJ from their attorney, just saying the owner had approved that easement that's in your pocket. The density reduction. Jack, we're certainly open to considering some ADUs out there. We eliminating them because there was so much concern about density. If there's some desire to add some back in, we can explore that. But again, that, that was why we did that. Eric already talked about the profitability of the subdivision with the lower density. The proposed density, and I'm doing this on a one unit per basis, is one unit per 2.2 acres in comparison to Vista Terrace density, which is one unit per 1.6 acres. So each lot in four wins basically has a little bit over a half unit. Sorry, a half an acre gross density per land area. So it's less dense than Vista Terrace. Town needs to support cluster development. It's in the master plan. And there's over twice the amount of open space that exists in Vista Terrace at 12.74 acres compared to only 5.37 acres in Vista Terrace. And again, the master plan TJ's already talked, talked about the density range. It's right in the middle, about half of it. And, you know, I just wanted to remind everyone, this, this area was annexed in basically 1981 with an understood density of one unit per acre. That was a zoning that was established by the code and affected the time when this was annexed. So everyone keeps talking about master plan density. It's really important to talk about land use code density. That is the actual density that's applied by the code and that's in the residential zone district. And again, you know, the intent is to accommodate low to moderate density development for single family detached dwellings, we're meeting that requirement. Uses by right, single family development and cluster development dwellings are uses by right in the zone district. The following dimensional standards establish the density and I'm really glad TJ had this up on his screen. The density, the code zone density today, it's not one unit per acre like 1981. It's one unit per 6,000 square feet. That's 312 units, which is ludicrous. No one would ever propose that out there, but that's the density that's allowed by the code and the town actually increased the density with the 2020 land use code because it went from one unit from 6,000 square feet to, or sorry, it was 10,000 square feet to six. So it was actually an increase in density. So it used to have 10,000 square feet and then 2020 it was lowered down to 6,000 square feet. So that actually increased the maximum we could do in 2020. And I realized there's a, you have to meet certain standards that are in the code in general conformance with the plan is required. Respect that. I just want to balance out this density conversation with what's allowed by the dimensional table in the code. So the proposed density is 94% density reduction over that density in the code. And again, just trying to get some reasonable use on this property, especially based on its history, its annexation and its zoning. The density is supported by adequate access. It has to be approved by CDOT. The current access situation, we're trying to improve that a little bit. Sewer is available by septic today. We have the study that shows that water is available from the town with the design improvements that we're going to be proposing overall, and that's going to help existing Vista Terrace with fire flow. Other utilities are available. Police protection is available from the town, fire protection from the fire history. All the services are readily available to the subdivision with the exception of central sewer. That's the only one and the towns approved that up there without sewer for the plat notes today. The visual impact, the master plan policy talks encouraging, this is really the only guidance I could find in the plan. Encouraging use of clustering, flexible setbacks, height limitations and other site planning techniques to minimize the visual impact of ridge line development when reviewed from public rights law is the closest thing. And so it's basically the subdivision is clustered at the back of the property with open space in the front. That's to, for several reasons, wildlife, as well as trying to cluster development away from the highway and provide that desired buffer. And the development lots are really set back from the highway 550 corridor with the closest lot about 346 feet away in a range of up to 414 feet. So that's quite a setback from the highway and you have the topography. The visual analysis only showed four lots on that west side that were visible. And for preliminary plat, we can provide more details and locations, but as I understand it, it's basically at the back of the building envelopes of all those lots where those story poles were placed. And it's lots seven through 10 that we will need to develop some design standards for much like have been developed for the River Sage subdivision. And that'll be provided with the preliminary plat, the actual standards and details. Central sewer, this is already authorized by a plat note. We've talked about this before, but this talks about the ability to have subject system and the need to do a, the second plat note talks about the need to have a subdivision or a development plan. So there was an understanding that there was no central sewer in the area. It wasn't feasible and there was an okay, at least by our interpretation of this note to use septic systems. Town staff actually approved the use of septic systems in an August 10th letter. Says staff is agreeable to not require the project to connect to sewer at this time. And that was pretty big. We understand there was concerns from this group about it. And so there was the feasibility studied on by the consulting engineer that shows there's good soils to accept septic systems up there. Staff came back after this August 10th letter and then wanted a, an analysis of how to hook up to the system. And so we looked at the highway 550 alignment, which you had in the packet. And then just yesterday, the project engineer looked at alignment through Vista Terrace and those, those costs range from 1.7 to 1.3 billion dollars. That's huge in comparison to the other public expenditure costs. And I hope you with that understand why it's very unfeasible financially. The highway 550 route, we don't even know if it's feasible because of the cuts they need and the slopes on the highway and proximity to a lot of traffic, especially on that quarter. And then Vista Terrace route that TJ drew up, that route is showing on side lot lines, which only have 10 foot wide easements, five feet on the other side. And a sewer route requires a 20 foot easement to dig it, put the top soil on the side, put it back in and maintain it. So that is completely a feasible route to go through there. The other fact is that they have in their covenants, they can't grant additional easements for these types of things. So we can't go ask for bigger easements. There you touched on it. Yeah, that's a good battery. This is an interesting one. I unfortunately don't have the 2000 plan, but the first time I saw it was in the the first time I saw it was in the, to basically the twenty eleven land use plan. And, um, it, it really does define, this is the current plan today that gives that guidance, and I appreciate TJ's explanation that urban levels of development outside of the initial growth boundary would be considered premature until substantial developments occurred within the boundary. Um, I do agree that's related to the provision of services and utilities. And, um, you know, one thing that we have always said in the past, this is not an urban level of development, it's a rural, one unit, basically for the two point two acres. Um, there's also not specific and objective policies like in the twenty eleven land use plan. There's a whole section in there with really specific goals and actions, and there's not even a goal or action now. Um, one thing I did want to point out was the twenty eleven land use plan stated the IGB is not intended prohibit development in fringe areas outside the boundary. Instead, development in those areas should not require urban services and should be managed at very low densities. So getting some background on that, I think is useful. And then I think the other thing I'd point out is that this area is within the town's urban growth area boundary. That is this, through the intergovernmental agreement, you're all familiar with it, where Uray County says everything outside of Ridgeway and Uray is going to be very rural, low density development. Everything within the boundary should be higher density development, and that's done for visual wildlife, all the reasons that are outlined in that agreement, um, which is great. Um, the only infrastructure service is, I've said already, a central sewer service. All the other utilities and services are available. Septic system is a very appropriate and feasible solution that's already allowed by plat notes. So we think we meet the test of the IGB and the Florida further discussing that with town staff. And I did want to point out that in the town approved the second filing of River Sage, which was also designated, designated today outside of the IGB. The initial growth boundary. So the town's approved a plat with the filing, and River Sage was annexed and zoned in two thousand and six. Um, the Vista Terrace addition was about twenty-four years prior. So Vista Terrace has been ripe and ready for development. It's taken twenty-four years, but it's there, and it's, I'm just pointing that out because it's been zoned and planted and it's excuse me, zoned and annexed quite a bit longer than River Sage was, and it's, River Sage moved through the process pretty quickly. Um, River Sage, we don't know, use the septic system, and I would note after dropping my daughter off out there several times, that highway access out there is interesting. Um, it is really tough. Um, it's probably the same type of situation, I imagine, when you're coming back from Montrose, trying to turn into the Vista Terrace, but when you're trying to take a left-hand turning movement at peak times across there, it's, it's, it's got as many challenges as our project does, for sure. Um, the wildlife impacts, uh, Eric already touched on this, um, so I'm not gonna belabor that point. The only point I'd say, as I heard there was a video of elk, I can show you a video of an elk herd in Solar Ranches on their fields at night when they come into graze. Um, they're not affected by development, and we have extensive wildlife mitigation measures in there. There's almost thirteen acres of open space, the building envelopes, maintaining the sage habitat, and the CPW recommendation of approval. Um, so uh, appreciate the thought of, you know, trying to keep up everywhere in town, but we are within the urban growth area, we're zoned, annexed, and just ready to move forward with the next step. Um, as far as the staff recommendation, um, we do want to work through some of those issues that TJ brought up today, we haven't had a chance to talk through some of them, but the, the goals keep getting moved for this, a little bit more, a little bit more, like, we, now we gotta do this, when that wasn't even identified back in August. And so we really need to sit down and say, okay, hopefully this is the complete list, and we can go through it in a methodical fashion. Um, I did want to comment on the steep slopes in that, that map. I commented on that map as a part of the master plan process, because I was afraid of the very thing it was gonna be used for, which is right now. Uh, that you're adopting a, a map that's generated by an outside entity, that's like some Colorado wildlife map or something else, and it's gonna be taken as gospel, and rezonings and subdivisions are gonna be gauged on that map. Um, and, and they are now, and it's just an advisory document. Steep slopes, there's a policy to create specific regulations for them in there, it's in and as an action item. There's nothing in your code today about it, and I agree with TJ on the thirty percent soap rule. Twenty percent soaps, I've never seen. Thirty percent soaps are easily mitigable, and we're avoiding most of the soaps that are thirty percent or greater. We actually provided us updated soap map in the packet and look forward to determining what mitigation measures we can include in our design standards, so we appreciate your extensive time tonight and deliberations, you've got another life agenda item after this, so glad to take, uh, some questions and maybe have a little bit of interaction time before you close off our comments, uh, for public comments, and we also would like the chance to rebut to the extent of it. Commenting on something else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, a question on, uh, water, uh, infrastructure, and you have some specifics?
For.
Infrastructure, water.
Yeah, water infrastructure, in regards to what TJ said, the water tank will be within the existing easement. It's already been sized and designed conceptually by Dan Quigley, our project engineer, um, to handle the fire flows for our level of density. Um, we also understand there's some piping system improvements, maybe pumping systems, we'll have to make sure are adequate to handle it. Um, but outside of that, we understand there's adequate water to serve this development, and we, it's more of an engineering exercise to design the system for fire flow and just daily use. I don't have a question.
Uh, Jack?
Hey there. Um, so I've got a questions, got a couple of questions for the developer. If I can, uh, read my writing here. Uh, first, Chris, I think it'd be a good idea to stick with twenty units. I think any, anything above twenty units was a bad idea. So, um, just wanted to say that. And then, um, way back in September, uh, I came to a meeting before, I was on the commission, and there was quite a bit of talk about this ten thousand square feet and the rest of the lot being undisturbed, and I, I don't quite understand it. And my concern about it is, can you really get a one acre lot approximately and build a a house with a two or three thousand square foot footprint, in a garage, in a porch, and a shed, and and fit a septic system inside that ten thousand square feet that's undisturbed? Or would this, would the septic system be outside that ten thousand square feet?
Um, we provided the, uh, plan set that showed a couple leach fields, and I believe were those designed inside the disturbance areas? Those were outside the disturbance areas, so the ten thousand square feet were building envelopes within each lot that basically all site, uh, development had to occur. Uh, buildings, gardens, dog runs, et cetera, and then anything outside of that would have to be maintained in a natural vegetative state, because we really want to maintain that sage habitat for wildlife.
It just, it seems like that ten thousand square feet might be unrealistic, so, um, I mean, it's, it's your call, it's your requirement, but my experience with septic tanks is, on these bigger houses with two and three bedroom, uh, two or three bathrooms can get large, and if it, if it's to be undisturbed, it should be undisturbed, so I think we need to be clear if the septics are gonna be in that ten thousand square feet, because so far, I'm not clear.
Actually, we're excited. Okay, so, sorry, just, uh, Dan just corrected me. He said they are inside that ten thousand square feet, and we'll confirm that as it moves forward with preliminary plat, but that was our goal, and I think there's a question up here about how do you enforce that, um? And that's enforced through the subdivision design standards, there'll be a designer view process by the association. Um, in addition to the town's planning process, they'll be plotted in the envelope, and then, you know, typically when there's disturbance envelopes, um, you know, the, the jurisdiction requires a survey, uh, the construction, make sure it stays in those envelopes, and there's maintained and managed by the association as well as the town, so it's kind of a joint enforcement overall, but I need to see that as kind of a dual function between the, the, the design review board, uh, which the developer will initially establish and run, and then just working through those details in the can, so. It's, it's possible to do, I've worked on plots like that, it's, it's just survey work and follow-up.
Uh, my question was, when we thought that the this leach fields were outside the disturbance zone, and that didn't make any sense, because they were.
Totally, totally understood.
So, and I, and I'm, I'm with Jack, I'm not sure I see how you can fit it all in that ten thousand square.
I think I'd like to comment on that, if I could. We are we're gonna have to reevaluate that. Thank you for asking that question, Jack. We, I'm sorry. We're gonna evaluate the ten thousand square foot disturbance area. It may need to be expanded, and that's a preliminary plat design issue, you know, for the, for the size of the homes and the square footage of the home, if a home is gonna be, let's say, twenty-five hundred, three thousand, thirty-five hundred, whatever it is, with the leach field and the septic being inside the disturbance area, it's, it's probably gonna have to expand beyond ten, just to be, just to be clear. And the bottom line is, it's going to be, we're not gonna allow through the covenants lawns for water preservation, and we're gonna have basically zero escape requirements that require sage habitat preservation. So even if we go to fifteen thousand square foot disturbance area, the entire rest of the lot is gonna be zero scape and maintain the sage habitat. So we're, we're very proud of that.
I'm not really concerned about the habitat, I'm concerned about the burden that puts on the building inspector. He's gonna be required to do that through the site plan process, and I would consider that you, uh, incorporate some type of variance that could be amended, because the state of Colorado just changed its septic permitting design requirements, and they're significantly different than they were twelve months ago. So, uh, you should, uh, if you're gonna.
Address that preliminary plat, for sure.
Well, if you're gonna do ten, I'm okay with the ten thousand square feet, but I, I don't want the ten thousand square feet not to be adequate, the building, drive the building inspector crazy. Um, so that's my concern there. And then, uh, there's a question to, to Chris, um, I'm, I'm not happy with the lollipop design, and, um, not trying to design your subdivision for you, but is there any way that you can make it a horseshoe and put a lot in the middle there, and and still make it financially feasible and not lose any lots? I mean, I think TJ's requirement is, is the cul-de-sac length is a big deal. And, um, I'm not a proponent of lol- lollypopping, I would be a proponent of a horseshoe. Is there any way you could change that? Is that at all feasible?
Hi, Jack, this is Dan Quigley with Buckhorn Engineering, um, working with the development team. So the, um, horseshoe design, um, ends up, you know, cutting out quite a bit of the, the lots that are there. So again, going back to Eric's point, that, that twenty lots, you know, are, are what's sort of financially feasible, um, for the developer and that, they would end up cutting that out, and I, I think we'd still like to work, um, with the town staff on, on the concept of the lollipop, um, being in excess of the, of the cul-de-sac regulations. Um, so, uh, you know, it, it works pretty well for uh, the development and with the addition of the emergency access, um, through there, if, if needed. Um, so I think we'd like to work with town staff on that concept.
We need to talk about the emergency access on.
That's why. Yeah, that's what I mentioned. Yeah, so we have, we, we have, you know, in addition to the main, main cul-de-sac road, if you will, coming in, the emergency access to lots fifteen and sixteen there.
It just doesn't seem like the, uh, you, uh, a horseshoe is gonna lose a bunch of lots, but uh, that's your call. Thank you, I'm done.
Jennifer?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so I had, I wanted to better understand the density. Um, we've mentioned density a lot, and I see that most of the calculations are based off of the total acreage. Am I correct on that, the forty-three acres? That is. Yeah, so, um, I'm looking at map, the map on page eight of our packet, it talks about the slopes. And I hope I read the map right, but it looks like there's a lot of steep slopes, um, listed on that map, that would take away some of those acres from building. So when I look at the buildings, I, I, I just wanted to understand the acreage of how much we're building on that's buildable, um, instead of the total acres.
Thanks for your question. In mountain communities, those thirteen acres would be built on, for instance, if this was Telluride in a New York minute. Those, that land is absolutely buildable, it's just a matter of the excavation cost to do it. But without question, that open space, that thirteen acres of valuable open space is a viable buffer for the trail that we propose, and absolutely buildable in many communities, and even this community, but we've chosen to keep it low density, twenty units.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Uh, did that answer your question, and do you have more questions?
Well, I um, no, I, not at this time. I think I also wanted to bring up on the, um, emergency access, the thought behind the emergency access, um. When we had talked about emergency access, I was thinking more along the lines of something that was close to the highway, going out to the highway, or going to Mall Road, and not cutting across, um, the wildlife area onto County Road twelve, which is kind of a long ways um, to go for the emergency access, and, um, so I I, I know that the fire department isn't going to, I mean, if, if the road was blocked and the fire department came, they would need straight access, they're not gonna go all the way around. If we had a fire and there was emergency access needed to have people get in and out, um, that's a little bit different, but I just imagined it going down someplace where it's not cutting across so much property.
So more of a secondary access than an emergency access?
Yes.
Does anyone else on the commission have any questions or comments? For the applicant or for TJ?
Yeah, I've got a question on GID. So TJ, if you could give us a little background on exactly what we would use that for.
Um, so I'll speak in generalities, I think maybe cresting, add some specifics.
Okay.
Um, but in general, a general improvement district or a special improvement district is very similar to a metro district, right? Colorado has a, an extensive amount of Title twenty-three districts, which are basically governmental entities. A, and so it's a taxing entity towards a specific purpose. And so in this case, it'd be setting up a district, so a mill levy to fund a particular improvement. And in this particular case, uh, we, as a staff, have talked about setting one up, again, you know, just enough to be dangerous with this information, so pressing kicking on the table, if you will, but, um, I, I think we all know that east of the, the highway has some challenges in, in public services, specifically sewer with some list, the stations and whatnot. And so that concept has been floated uh, multiple times of extensive improvements or, uh, capital investment into the sewer system on the east side of Highway five fifty is going to be necessary at some point when development reaches a threshold. I don't know what that is, um, I haven't been part of any of those discussions per cent, but at some point, and so I think what we're hearing in this particular conversation is that this is going to be part of that larger conversation too. So we don't necessarily anticipate, um, uh, uh, someone coming and saying, hey, finally we brought a sewer to four wind subdivision, now your twenty lots need to, to come in. This is going to be a massive project that if you can envision it in general terms, will encompass the entire east side will encompass the entire east side of the highway, town limits with up on the east side of the highway to help fund the improvements that are gonna be necessary. Does that help answer that?
It does. And so is it strictly funded by mill levy then?
Yes, that particular funding source, yes. There are other ways to do it, um, not so much. Usually when you talk about residential improvements, you're talking about mill levies. It's just probably, I want to be careful of my words, but the simplest way to fund a public infrastructure project like that. Other ways are bonding, right? So you do a, 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 um, you know, valid initiative for bond to fund things, right? It could be something a little bit different. Okay, the difference between like a GID in general, um, like a valid initiative would be the GID would only impact those who are benefiting or within the district, so benefiting directly from the improvement.
Okay. And was there some comment about the developer actually being part of the GID? Did I, did I hear that correctly or am I getting my words twisted up here?
Um. Technically, no, because it could be something that was kind of set up through the town.
Okay.
Right? The town would be actually the board I think would probably sit as the board that oversees it, the council. Um, and and then it would include any property owner within that district. So say the developer owns a property, then yes, they would be within it, but not necessarily developer as a developer.
Okay.
So this is different than a local improvement district?
Correct. This is not a metro district. Metro, metropolitan district.
Okay. I mean, I I think the, you know, I've worked on projects where, you know, developers basically require lot owners to, you know, enter into any improvement district that's created and not fight it sort of situation. So something like that, that's a plateau. That's that's easy game.
Yeah, and that's essentially what it is, that that what we're trying to establish now is that hey, at some point, there's gonna be significant investment required uh, in in some areas in the town. That's a significant project that the town's gonna have to take too. Um, at at some point, um, to design it, to look at the the boundaries of that district. Who's there looking capacity, um, not just of the lines, but the lagoons, right? At some point, we're gonna increase.
True.
That too, right? So um, it it takes all of that into account. And and I think what we're getting at, and this is why there's a lot that needs to be talked about with it, like how, how does that work? Um, that the plateau in particular is saying that, hey, when that happens, you guys will be part of that. Um, so I'm sure there's some way, you know, way outside my my bounds, if you will, but I'm sure there's something to lobby against being part of that. Um, you know, so uh, we just want to make sure that that's not the, the option.
Just to give our stance, Russ, in addition to paying for the turning lane and paying for the emergency egress, we would be amenable to sitting down and taking a look at what Ridgeway needs, whether it's an overpass for pedestrian bike traffic and wildlife, whether it's down at Conoco, up at Terrace Drive, somewhere in between, whether it's infrastructure improvement and taking a look at the percentage of our net and contributing that towards the town, even for a portable housing. It could be used as the town felt was the highest priority, but we'd be willing to contribute in that manner through uh, to delivery with uh, town and staff, you know, for final proof.
Okay, thanks. All right, yeah. Um, I have comments rather than questions, and I think the appropriate time for them is after the public.
Um, so before I open public comment, I would just like to note that there were a lot of letters received. They were entered into the record. They were part of our packet and we've read those letters. And I'm hoping that we are able through public comment to address um, the issues that haven't been already brought up tonight, if possible, but obviously when I open public comment, I can't necessarily control that. Um, we'll need to limit each person's comment. Um, I would say to at least two, no more than three minutes, which I think is generous. And uh, it looks like there may be a lot of people that want to speak. So uh, when you are ready to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and your address and give us your comment. And I will now open public comment.
My name is Joe Woodick. I'm a resident of Vista Terrace. I had a lead into this, but it was, they jumped right into what what I'm, what I'm talking, gonna talk about anyway. I'm the USGS guy that sent the information in. How I arrived at this, my concern is I have my best friend, is Joe Constead. He's a geotechnical engineer with the Bureau of Reclamation. His, his specialty is is rock formation and soil, uh, uh, the stiffening of soil or the the slippage of soil and and correcting that. So anyway, when we came down, I showed him the documents of the subdivision that was proposed. And as he looked at it, his biggest concern was a septic system up there. He says, this subdivision needs all the criteria of a hillside subdivision. And because of that, he says, it the the the, your, your regulations do not apply to a hillside subdivision. He says they're much more stringent. He says, the usually now, he says, the 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 size of the lot for hillside subdivision with the gradient that that house is three, three acres, if you're gonna use a septic tank. He says, but with the stacking of the septic tanks on that lot, and if you look how they're stacked, the one after the other on top of each other, same with the homes. He says, the chances of that moving, he says, are great. He says, the responsibility for the city is also extremely great, especially if they don't have the use of a sewer. He says, or or they, and they don't use it. So when they say that they can't afford to do it, my grandfather had a saying for that. It's if you can't afford to do it, then you can't afford it. So his recommendation was do not do that. Septic system up there, he says, where are they gonna put the septic system? Whoever commented on that about where you put the septic system, where you can't on a gradient like that, you can't put the septic system uphill of the house, because you, then you're gonna destabilize the soil. So I have a USGS, a couple of comments, and I did send them to to Preston. But the USGS, and this is a quote from them, along with a couple of other engineers. It says, areas that are generally prone to landslide, landslide hazards. Says on or at the base of slopes, which that is in or at uh, at the base of a minor drainage hollow, which could be there at the base or top of a steep, steep cut slope. And then the the one that really, that really fits this, and he sent this to me, says the developed hillsides where leach field septic systems are used. Read that again. The developed hillsides where leach fields and septic systems are used. I'm gonna go on with a couple of other quotes. Says sewage disposal is more closely related to drainage problems in hillside areas than it is in other areas. Septic tanks may cause saturation to the soil, which resulting in geological problems such as landslides. Of special importance is the sewage disposal problem. Some cities are completely sewered, but in counties and many incorporated areas, there are large mountainous regions that will not be provided with sewers for many years to come. This disposal problem should be included in the original subdivision planning. Let me, let me requote that again. It says, this disposal problem should be included in the original subdivision planning. It says, original sub, uh, um, but quite often little is done other than increasing the size of the of the plot area to provide space for the septic tanks and the necessary leaching lines or seepage pits. Another quote, existing seven, please.
Time. You're at four minutes. I have to let other people speak. It's at four minutes.
That was four minutes already?
Yes.
Wow. Well, let me just, let me just jump in. There, I have several quotes and I could just leave them in here. But the the point, I guess, just that they closed this off, and I didn't realize it was going that fast, is that this, this subdivision is is considered a hillside subdivision. And and putting those septic tanks in there really puts the city at risk. I think that it 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 really needs to be looked at it from USGA, USGS findings and also the CGS, which is Colorado Geo-Technical Service, uh, or it's a survey also. I I would really, really hope you guys would really look at that hard because I do feel that there is a tremendous responsibility if they do move, which he said they will, that many stacks septic tanks. He says, it will cost the city a lot of money.
What can I give you a little wave whenever we're at two minutes?
Hi, uh, Pam Foister. I live at four thirty five Terrace Drive. Um, I've learned a lot tonight and I think, you know, since July and August, we've really learned quite a bit about this project. My compliments to the staff and to the developers because both groups have done an additional amount of homework and research. And I think that's really helped the process come to greater clarity. Um, I want to make one uh, observation. Staff did not approve uh, septic tanks because they don't have the authority to do so. They simply made the recommendation that initially they thought septic would work in the area. And then since then, more research has been done. So they didn't approve it. I just want to make that clear. Um, I, what I'm hearing from the developer is that we've gone so far past a sketch plan and I certainly understand their concerns. The reason I think we've done that is because this is a simple project in a very complex location. Um, the amount of infrastructure challenges to this site are enormous. Um, I don't think the town has the money to take this on. Um, I think that if you told twenty homeowner owners ten years from now that they're gonna have to pay for a septic or for a sewer system, um, you'd have twenty lawsuits coming at you. I just don't, whether it's written into a contract or not, I don't think they'll buy it. Um, I, I think it's just, I think if you took the density or you took the footprint of the, the building envelope of where they want to put the houses and you put it on a piece of property closer to the core of town, there would be no issues. We, we would have already seen that they had approval. Um, but it's the location that makes this development not work. Um. It it could be, it could be in the county with more land and, you know, thirty five acres per house. And you could do it all different kinds of ways with septic, but to try and achieve what they want, I think it needs to be closer to the core where the town infrastructure already exists. And then we don't have any of these concerns and issues. When I see the staff list of ten concerns that they still have, um, that's, that to me is a big red flag. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Steve McCombe. I live at two ninety Terrace Drive. I talked to you on, at the August thirtieth meeting, uh, about the elephant in the room. Sometimes we get so boggled down in details with each aspect of the project that we never look at the ten thousand foot level. Does this project make sense? And I'm telling you, it doesn't make sense for one major reason, one way in and out of Vista Terrace. I put together a video that showed in real time down at the highway, sixty mile an hour traffic going back and forth. It's a lot of hassle there. Uh, the bottom line is the developer did not meet the action item put on him on the August thirtieth meeting. He says it was for an emergency uh, egress only. I heard, find a secondary access. You got two dangerous uh, highway uh, uh, access egress. Find another one to help relieve that. So the action was not met. Some statistics, once there's a total build out with four winds and the eleven lots that haven't been developed in Vista Terrace, you'll see an eighty four percent increase in the number of lots in that neighborhood. You're talking about, gotta breathe. You're talking about a hundred and seventy five to a hundred and eighty additional people over current levels in the neighborhood, all of which got to get out of that single way on a dangerous highway. They want to put a single track pedestrian bike path trail, about four blocks long, not really that great of a trail, uh, open to the public, and that's gonna come out right in that same dangerous intersection. Doesn't make any sense at all. Five traffic, my investigations found five traffic fatalities on Highway five fifty from the curve at Orbis to about a mile and a half south of Kelowna. And that's in eighteen months. We all drive this highway almost every day. We know how dangerous it is. So if you add ice and snow on top of a normal precarious highway, you're talking a very dangerous place.
You're at two and a half minutes.
Yes, in summary. Um, I don't believe I'm going out on a limb, folks, by saying all the current residents of Vista Terrace and all future potential residents in that neighborhood are looking to the town of Ridgeway to put the safety of its citizens above a force bit in this geographical lo- location. I think that you're well within your rights to reject this application. Save the town time and money, save the developer time and money. It doesn't make sense. You're creating a horror story at that intersection. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Started with my mask. Last time I was here, my wife and I caught COVID, so I wear a mask for now. Uh, my name is Rory Klingon. I live at five twenty Vista Drive here in, uh, Ridgeway. Um, I'm always one, there's a plan A and there should be a plan B, never just a plan A. They said about the septic tanks, what if they do perk? I had that problem. I put in a development somewhat like they did. My, we showed that it should be fine. Next thing is, I'm putting in a lift station that went three quarters of a mile down the city highway at my expense. Now, if it perks, we do have a problem there. I'm not saying it will, but I did, and it was all approved. Uh, second thing, I think that they do have a good idea about the rabbit going over the highway. But why not consider the wildlife where you're at it? Most of our problem with the deers getting hit up there is because the deers are trying to get to the water. So if you'll notice, I don't know how many deer I have seen on that highway that has been hit. Why not supply it a little bit wider so that the deer and bikers can use the same ingress? Uh, my, I go back to my original one. Water is my main concern here. And we're putting in a lot of people. Not only the developments are, but we're letting houses, we have, I've seen no count on how many homes are being built in addition to these projects. That might be something to look at. Uh, as to the people they were talking and they were showing in the, the, where they were passing on the right, I think that is a state problem. Uh, if they will put arrows on the highway showing that's a turn lane, instead of just, you're thinking that it's gonna be another passing lane. I think a lot of our problems could be cured there and on down highways. You see people trying to go out and they find out it's a turn lane instead of, if the highway were hit and put just arrows, you span them on and say it's going to the right, that would help a lot on our state. I take it that the electricity is gonna be underground. And that is something that's fantastic here. I agree with him on the elevation. You cannot put sewer lines down. I put in enough of them to note that doesn't work. Um.
You're at two and a half minutes also.
And I think that pretty well sums up. Uh, I think that the, the main thing is that we need to look at not just one flat, but what happens if we do that problems? Oh, oh, one other thing, the lane going out up over the mountain that's supposed to be that. I know enough about renters and know enough about people. They're gonna use that to come off twelve, shorten that road, come to our property, go through Vista Terrace and hit the highway. How much would that take off of their trip? We're not going to decrease the amount of traffic in there. We're gonna increase it by using that bypass coming off. The people will go down twelve, hit us, we're going to town, and so drive and all the way down. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Anthony Gigoff, six one five Terrace Drive. I have a home on Terrace Drive and it faces south with a rear deck that faces north. If I don't remove all of the snow on that deck every time it snows, that snow will be there until. That snow will be there until mid-May or late April. The idea that this emergency egress or whatever it's being called can be maintained so that people can use that to escape. Uh, I can't imagine how that would happen. They would have to ha- they would have to hire somebody to be there constantly. To address the, the ability for someone to use that uh, route. Uh, it's in a heavy, heavily forested uh, region and it's on the north side of the slope. So I just don't see that as being feasible. There's been a lot of comments about feasibility of the project. And this or the town has made certain requirements for these subdivisions. And you are just trying to uphold those requirements. So if the, if the project can't be done and it's infeasible to meet these requirements, then it shouldn't be done. And my concern is, is there being some kind of a Faustian bargain being made with the devil of profit? And I'm concerned about that overall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kevin, Kevin Schismeyer. I'm a resident of Vista Terrace. I did not come intending to speak, but to follow up on Anthony's comments. I'm a little bit concerned as well by the secondary egress or emergency access. Um, I did not know until the presentation by the developer that the road would only be maintained in the summer, saying that there would be no emergencies in the winter. And I would suggest that you never know when a natural gas line might explode or a you know, a propane tank at a house exploded. Maybe our access road coming up to Vista Terrace might be wiped out and we would need some form of egress possibly to the east. Uh, as mentioned, that road is long and tortuous. It is on the north slope. It would, I think, require winter maintenance, but as I recall in reading the easement agreement with the Endicott heirs. Uh, they said that snow removal was part of that agreement and yet they said that they would not maintain it in the winter. So I think there's a disconnect there. Uh, I also have issues with the um, let breakage of the uh, ridge line, especially when coming from the north on Highway five fifty. Uh, it was a very beautiful view of Mount Snapple's, which is pretty much, you know, just sandwiched right there in that frame. And I think that houses on that ridge line, no matter how high, would be an absolute deterrent to that beautiful view. All I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joan Schismeyer, Vista Terrace four four five Carplane. I wasn't going to talk either, like doing this, but um, one thing that I thought about that hasn't been brought up tonight. There are a couple of things, but one thing in particular, they were talking about all of the um, the traffic that has been looked at, but there are still eleven lots in Vista Terrace that have not been built on. And so you have to add that into the, the equation of how much more traffic um, potentially we'd have even before um, proposing anything else um, as far as building on a different site, not currently in Vista Terrace. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention too is with regard to the elk. Where they're, they're planning on having the uh, the building site that, that is the, the key migration period, um, migration trap for the elk. They don't go across this um, five fifty from Vista Terrace. They like, there's a circuitous route that they like to take from uh, Elk Creek up through that area, down um, to County Road twelve and then back out to County Road twelve and, and ten. That's their loop there. And then the elk that are over by Solar Ranch come down from Elk Meadows and, and come around. The only places that I've ever seen elk cross um, are right across the Fisher Ranch area there on five fifty. Um, that's where the elk like to cross between there and the curve before you get to Orvis. That's um, that's just, that's what they do. So um, let's see. Um, I do have some concerns about the water as well as far as mitigating that. Um, I'm not sure if the tank sizes are adequate. I know that the fire department has been really great about setting up um, plan, plans if there is a fire someplace to come and take care of it. But again, they only have access through our main entrance into Vista Terrace as well. Let's see, last um. Oh, with regard to that um, that easement out to County Road twelve. It would have to be at least two wide because if, if there was a problem um, at five fifty and there wasn't a situation in Vista Terrace. You'd have to have it um, double wide to go out to County Road twelve, otherwise the emergency um, vehicles or the medical vehicles would not be able to come in um, at the same time that everybody from Vista Terrace is going out. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening, Dan Berlin, five fifty Vista Drive. Um, so one thing that I haven't heard people talk about very much, and I've been a little disappointed um, just in terms of that hasn't come up more is the look and feel of our neighborhood. Right? Vista Terrace is a very unique development within Ridgeway and it feels very rural, very kind of opens, open and, and um, I just, the character of that is quite unique. Um, one of the principles outlined in the master plan is the concept of higher density in the town core. And as you get further and further out, that density decreases, see a transition to the county agriculture. Uh, Vista Terrace is very ru- rural, wide open feeling with homes spread out all across the property. If you compare that to the development being proposed, all, all twenty lots are right in the center of the property. Um, in, 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 in a big contrast to how Vista Terrace is laid out. So from a look and feel, when you come into Vista Terrace, then all of a sudden you've got these twenty homes sitting right there all next to each other. Um, you know, the twelve acres of open space, it's not really open spaces, land that can't be developed and or people wouldn't want to put a house right above five fifty like that. So when they talk about their metrics in terms of the density, you know, they're, they're doing the math on all the acreage. But if you subtract out the open space, that's not really open space. Um, the, the way the property is going to feel is very different than Vista Terrace because it's really twenty acres with twenty houses. And so just keep in mind that that look and feel when you walk through that area, it's going to be dramatically different. You know, when you're, if I'm, this demo element is proposed would make sense if it were in between town and Vista Terrace. But it's town Vista Terrace with its open world feeling and then this development and then your A county agriculture. It, the transition doesn't make sense, you know, and I think that's the issue here. You know, and at the last meeting, you know, ma- Mr. Mayor, you said, you know, come back with something that has um, fewer lots. We're here again with twenty lots, you know, so I'd say if you're going to propose another continuance yet again, to be specific and say to the developer, come back with a proposal of ten or less lots. You know, if, if you think about other developments that have been done, what should be up there? Well, think about Dallas Meadows, you know, has a very open feeling even more so than Vista Terrace. That's an appropriate transition from Vista Terrace to county um, uh, you know, ag space. Let's see. I think that's it. Um, I would respectfully request that you deny the application. Um, I, I really think that, as people have said before, the sheer fact that there are ten items that the staff needs to develop further. And it's a sign this is not the right development for this piece of property. And one comment I do have to make about the um, emergency access. Um, I've been on that ranch road. I have a Prius. There's no way you could drive it through that side of the road. Um, we'll go out there and just, we'll go out there. Let's do it. Um, the other thing I'd say is that someone else just said it's a very narrow ranch road. Um, there's no way you could get a fire truck on that road, let alone having people going out and emergency vehicles coming in. Let alone the length of that road is huge and trying to maintain that. Um, so thank you.
Hey, uh, Plant Pastors, uh, thirty-three Clinton Street. Um, thank you guys as usual. Uh, thank you guys too. I know we've worked a bundle putting this together. Don't mean it's a great idea. Sorry, man. Um, so uh, uh, I think I got a lot of my thoughts in the letter or multiple letters. Um, I think everybody else has written letters. Everybody's, I'm going to do my best not to uh, belabor the letter points. Um, things that came up for me, the um, secondary access, uh, great. Appreciate that um, this is being addressed. Two items that come up for me, adjacent property owner notification. You know, after I saw the map from the package, I had to call Jack Raiser who owns the property right at the bottom of that access. That's within the county. Um, I feel like he had no idea of this proposal. Um, feel like it's really important for the surrounding ranch owners to be aware, especially John Billings. Who lives right at the bottom of the turn that could be heavily impacted by this. Um, there might be some uh, comments to be made by that. Uh, the fire, the secondary, the um, emergency access road, the county has very uh, clearly delineated standards for uh, fire access. Uh, fourteen foot right, foot wide access. Forty thousand pound rating um, with forty foot pullouts every five hundred foot. An additional uh, twelve foot in width. So that addresses some um, comments made earlier. So if this is an emergency access, uh, and we're going to call it that within town limits and it runs through county property. With an easement or without an easement, it needs to meet county fire standards for access. Um. Let's see, uh, fire access, adjacent property owner notification. Um, I do have some uh, questions or just concerns about how the HOA would work. Um, you know, as they, these guys said, the property is ripe for development. Um, you know, it will be developed someday. How that looks is up to you guys. Um, and hopefully uh, it's a little different than this. But how does the HOA got is, is going to work? You know, just the terrace, we have a architectural review board. Um, all uh, proposed buildings have to be approved by the architectural review board, including signage on Terrace Drive and Terrace Drive. You know, like we have our Vista Terrace sign, right? Those that's approved by the art board. Um, we maintain that. How does this work being, becoming another primary access for another subdivision without its own access? So again, I would push the point. Having its own access.
You're almost out of time.
Okay, I'm almost out of time. Let's see, uh, land use code. Um, okay, not a caving habitat. I'll tend to disagree. Uh, given the BLM half mile away gets closed annually for caving. Um, and sewer, you know, sewer versus septic. I mean, you know, septic engineering standards are going to be met, I'm sure. Uh, these guys know what they're doing, you know, septic is septic, there's, there's state codes. Um. Safety with septic can be addressed with density. Lower the density. Reduce, you know, density of septic. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any public on Zoom that's wishing to comment? Does it look like it? Anyone else in the audience?
And if anybody on Zoom would like to speak and doesn't know how to put your hand up, just unmute and speak. Identify yourself.
I take somebody's time.
My name's Doc Faith, four seventy-five Terrace Drive. And I'd like to give my three minutes to the other guy. Is that all right?
There you go.
Are you going to talk about septic more?
I'll take it.
You can have three more minutes.
All right. Thank you very much.
But it's already starting, so hurry up.
Not that I like to talk a lot, but well, I wanted to point out this couple of other things that are probably wanting to take the three minutes, but wi- with twenty homes like that. The calculations that were done by its geotechnical engineers is that two million one hundred ninety thousand gallons of water or fluids are going to be dumped into the soil up there every year with those twenty homes. He says that's not including the rain or the snow or anything else. He says, so the, the chances of that increasing landslide or even landslide, he says, is, is tremendous. And I think that it really has to be looked at that way. And he says, and, and being that now is, is considered and it, and it is, it does meet the criteria of a, of a hillside subdivision. If you're going to do that and you're going to do that, then you need at least a minimum of three acres per lot for your septic systems. So anyway, thank you for the extra time.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping me breathing.
Anyone else with public comment? I will now close public comment. What do you guys got? Oh, would you like to say something?
I, I wouldn't. I, I just want to point out that the applicant did request to re- uh, respond to some of the public comments. Uh, so I wanted to, before he went into deliberations or whatever, I just wanted to bring that back up just in case.
Yeah, okay.
Because we wouldn't have our engineer speak about it.
Again, quickly again, um, I think probably just a couple of points. I sure, certainly appreciate all the public comments. Um, obviously um, a lot of thought went into their comments, um, particularly Joe's, um, but, but many people. Um, obviously, uh, so my background's in both geology and, and geotechnical engineering as well as civil engineering. Um, and the, this particular hillside is not uh, identified as a landslide area. Um, it's very typical, um, obviously from the surrounding development with Vista Terrace um, for septic systems, um, quite common in the area. Um, it, the soils that we looked at during our investigation for septic feasibility indicated that they're, you know, quite sandy and that unlikely um, to actually incur any landslides. There's, there's no evidence of any landslides on the property at this point. Um, and I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't sit and rapidly calculate, um, you know, what, what the gallons are. But again, these are um, tradit- traditional systems in, in this, this area. So um, I certainly appreciate the concerns and some, certainly something to look at um, from a design standpoint. But again, um, they're not stacked on top of one another. All of these are, are appropriately placed adjacent to um, the, the roadways. Um, at least in the initial conceptual sketch plan um, phase of uh, as requested by the town staff to show leach fields um, adjacent or within the, the disturbance areas. Um, and then I think just uh, the only other comment that I recall particularly was the traffic impact study. Actually, the traffic impact study does account for all of the full build out of both Vista Terrace and the full build out of four winds. That's, that's common. So it takes a look at what the traffic is now in twenty twenty-three and projects it out to uh, forty, or twenty years to twenty forty-three. Um, at full build out of both developments.
I have a question on that that hasn't been mentioned and um, uh, it's been addressed that there is a traffic issue there now without additional people and additional units. But if it's required that a turning lane is, has to be put in with this development, even though it increases traffic, it's possible that it could make it safer than it is already?
Certainly, yeah.
Just a thought. I mean, we would, we're, we're acknowledging the problem. Maybe this would help to, to solve the problem?
It, it definitely would. So I mean, just to make a, a matter of point, um, Vista Terrace as it is now, as well as that full build out already warrants um, a D cell left turn lane into the property. Um, speaking with, with uh, Dan Rusin as the CDOT um, permits manager for the state and who's reviewing um, who reviewed our initial traffic impact study and is reviewing the second one. Um, Vista Terrace already warrants that lane and probably should have had it, you know, thirty years.
But there'd be no way to require that now of them?
Um, no, not that I know of. C- CDOT couldn't. It would, yeah, no, there wouldn't really be a way to do that. It was, it was approved and developed that way. Sure, PJ might be agree that whether it was what was the sins of the past? What's the comment? So um, yeah, uh, there wouldn't be any way to, to, to mandate, you know, that Vista Terrace put that in now. That would be um, you know, at least, at least from CDOT's perspective. So.
Just a thought. I mean, I know it will increase traffic, but it's also planning to mitigate some of it.
That's, that's one of the benefits, you know, that, that um, the development team has offered up is that, you know, whatever CDOT. That's, that's one of the benefits, you know, that, that, um, the development team has offered up is that, you know, whatever CDOT requires. Um, you know, they'll, they'll, you know, accommodate that, you know, in their, in their costs.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Oh, just one, uh.
I'm sorry, sorry.
One, one biologic question, uh, is that, is the, uh, the soil out there for rain? Is it an old rain or is it underli- underlaid with, with febrile?
Uh, sandstone, so it's, it's got Dakota sandstone underneath it, so it's, it's what we would call colluvium slopes, so it's, it's weathered down.
How, how deep is that?
So our test pits, you know, by state standards, you know, we went down to eight feet. Um, we didn't hit bedrock in three of the four holes, we did hit bedrock in one of the holes, um. And it was within roughly four to five feet of the surface. So, you know, in that, in that particular area, um, that may require a different design standard from, you know, for a septic system, but. Um, but relatively shallow bedrock.
Okay.
And then NRCS, you know, one of the things that I do when I look at sites is I go to the NRCS soil studies that they have a web soil survey that's available online. And take a look at what are the, what are the limitations for, for building on a site as far as slopes, um, water, groundwater, groundwater, bedrock. Yep, exactly, and whether or not they are, in fact, you know, feasible for septic and they, and this one is identified as being acceptable.
So you're saying there's, there are no expansive soils?
Oh, no, 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 pretty sandy, yeah, pretty sandy soils.
So unusual for a.
It, it was, yeah, um, you know, I'm, I'm from Montos myself, and so we deal with adobe plays all day long and septic systems, so. Um, yeah, so that, one of the nice things is that, that allows the, the soils here were, you know, a, a sandy enough soil. Um, that they would, that reduces the size of that required leach field.
Even with the underlying bedrock?
Correct, right.
Anywhere.
Yeah, exactly, right, yeah. Yeah, and the bedrock was pretty fractured, um, at least in, you know, in one hole that we looked at, so again, um, yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
After.
I'd like to respond quickly if I can, the comment regarding emergency egress, and I'll, I'll keep this. We attacked that problem, no one, we were asked to, to address, no one has done anything about that. This is a significant solution to a great problem of, for wildlife, excuse me, wildfire mitigation. It, it. In essence, solves the problem, and to pick it apart or to give undue. A disproportionate amount of attention to the negativity. First, first people ask for there to be one, and then it, it gets picked apart, it's, it's extremely disheartening. What we've been able to come up with is an outstanding solution. That we can further work through with the town and. It, it, it solves a great safety hazard, and I just wanna make the point that it's, it's. It's outstanding for the town and for the existing community on top, solving an existing problem on top of our twenty homes.
Thank you. You guys are good at responses? TJ, you got anything?
No, ma'am.
Bill was starting.
Well, you were saving your comments to the end of making my comments, so.
Yeah, um, well, I, I, Eric, I gotta respond to your last comment, um. If, if you're not, uh, familiar enough with the development process to know that, of course, people are gonna have. Points about solutions you propose, um, and if you think that. The comments that I totally agree with, that that is an extremely long north facing. Two-track road that does not serve emergency access purposes. It's not wide enough for two vehicles to pass, as Clint, Clint said, it doesn't meet county.
Traffic.
Fire access.
And only level may traffic.
Well, that doesn't work for emergency access, let alone Chris's point that it's only gonna work in the summer. Emergency access if it only works during one season.
Respectfully, John, when there's a.
I, I really don't wanna have a bad thought about this. You, you need to just be able to listen to the comments that we have, okay, and I totally. Understand, you guys have worked your butts off, I respect all the time and energy and money you're putting on this, totally get it. But this, I, I would argue that what you've been presenting tonight in a lot of ways. Is comparing apples to oranges, Vista Terrace is not your typical residential subdivision anywhere in the world. Let alone the town of Bridgeway. I would argue that if. The Vista Terrace flat is originally platted, came in for development today, there's no way it would have passed. And all the lots that was allowed and then the subsequent higher zoning allowed in the master plan, higher density is. For the part of town that is flat and platted and. Not single access, um, it's just apples to oranges. I also agree, think that the, the wildlife, um, issue, the wildlife corridor issue, um, Chris stated that. You know, it, you, you guys keep comparing other developments like the Solar Ranch elk herd. It doesn't come through Solar Ranch, it comes from Elk Meadows. Down through the big open space next to Solar Ranch to the river, it's not, the corridor, it doesn't go through Solar Ranch, so of course, Solar Ranch isn't affected. What we're talking about here is a, a wildlife access that actually goes through the subdivision right where you're proposing your development. At what I think is too high a density or what's up there. Okay, um. It's, and it, John said that the elk don't go down to the river there, the deer certainly do. The number of deer that get slaughtered at just past the Vista Terrace Road is obscene, and. I think it was a sheriff's deputy was killed on his motorcycle about five or ten years ago, crashing into a herd of deer crossing the highway. Um, that's a huge corridor, and it comes right through where you're proposing the development. So, you know, yes, Kelly Crane's letter is very diplomatic about supporting. Development in urban areas, in, in municipal, within municipal boundaries, this isn't your typical development within a municipal boundary, it's. A unique situation that can't be compared to Eagle Hill, can't be compared to, um, Solar Ranch, it's not the same thing, it's apples and oranges. So, um. I don't know if you guys are willing, the, the staff has proposed, um. Continuing it another couple of months, um, I, it sounds like. You, you might be willing to do that, but, um, I, I don't see that you've addressed the issues that we asked you to address back in September. Um, not to my satisfaction, and. While the engineers are disagreeing about the, the septic and the impact of the septic there. I think the only way septic works there is if it's like half been a load lots, then twenty lots in that small space, um. You don't, your, your, uh, pictures of the story pole, the thirty-five foot story pole, you can't tell from those pictures where those pictures were taken. You know, it's, it's, I'd like to see them taken from another, like, the way the county does, it's from a number of spots along Highway fifty. And identify where the photos were taken, show specifically on the photos. Where they were taken and then where the pole was on the property and, um. I don't know if I've got anything else for now, but I, I just think that it needs to be said that this, um. A lot of your arguments tonight are, are really not relevant because you're comparing apples to oranges.
Thank you.
I would have to concur with, with John on, uh, on density. Uh, uh. And, uh, the gentleman who, uh, who mentioned the look of, uh, uh. Vista Terrace. The old Vista Terrace versus, uh, what you're proposing with twenty. Lots, uh, they will be significantly closer together. Than any of the other houses in Vista Terrace, um. So, um. Also, along John's line, uh. You'll probably have to develop a thick skin, uh, for developing in, in Ridgeway. Uh, and try not to get upset when people do come out against, uh, what you're proposing. Uh, so, don't get too upset, uh. I am also in favor of continuing this. Unless you want an answer tonight, you want an answer tonight, it would be no from me. Uh, but, uh, if you're willing to work with staff, uh. I, you know. I would. Say there's, and, and, and lessen the density, or at least the visual. Uh, clustering density, uh. Then, uh, you know, it might be worth continuing.
We're certainly willing to work with staff, we have to work with staff through every step of the process, without question.
Jack?
Are we still in a public meeting?
I think so.
Still a public hearing.
Okay, I was just curious, I thought maybe we're back in the staff. I kind of agree with what Bill's saying, I, I would like to continue this, I'm concerned about. Uh, not taking this opportunity to solve an existing problem. Uh, I, I hear John's concern about density, I hear Bill's concerned about density. But I also hear Michelle's concerned about a problem that already exists. And should have been solved thirty years ago with the proper planning, so I think the developers. Willing to shoot a hole in a million dollar bill to fix this access problem, and we should help them do that. And, uh, if we can get it to where it's acceptable to us, I think that would be a win-win.
Jennifer, you had your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to add because I was concerned about the density as well, and. Just to add to what everybody has already said, um, I concur with both John and Bill. Um, there was also mention about utility easements not needed, and. I, I didn't understand that comment, and we do need you, u- utility easements. Um, that is included on that, so. Just more density, um, concerns along that line as well. Along with the water, I'm very concerned about the water and their proposal to how. They're gonna supply that without affecting the other people in Vista Terrace. And their ra- water rates, because they mentioned the water rates going up. And I, I would not like to see that people. Are unable to live there anymore because their water rates went up to build the subdivision. So, those are my added concerns.
Thanks, Jennifer. Um.
I'd also like to, to, oh, back up, and I, I didn't, uh, mention, but the, the lollipop road configuration doesn't work for me. Um, I think it makes more sense to do horseshoe with fewer lots. So, that's, that's my take on it.
TJ, do you, it looks like we're headed towards, uh, continuance, do you feel that? The commission has given enough direction, um, what I'm hearing is density. Um, they would like to see fewer lots, um. John just mentioned the, a different design, the road designed differently, um, there's. Egress, so there's access and e- emergency access and emergency egress. Those two issues, but I'm not, I'm not hearing if that is with lower density, if that's still a huge issue or not.
It's, it's an issue, I mean, I think several of the commenters mentioned the same thoughts that I've always had, you can't. You can't assume that there's never gonna be the possibility of some, uh, accident that could blow up a road. Uh, remove the ability to get out of the subdivision at any time here, and that's, um. That's always been an issue, I'm, I'm supportive of, of the development, if they can solve the problem, but it's, it's gotta be in a way that is actually usable year round. Um, and two ways, so that emergency access can get in while people are evacuated. That's the only way it works, um.
Even with fewer lots? Doesn't make that issue go away?
I guess it depends on how much fewer we're talking about. What you're talking about. Yeah, I mean, we've already talked about, there's still need for that turn lane on highway, just Vista Terrace as it is.
Right, I wasn't, I was referring to the, to the background, not from the highway, CDOT would decide that.
And it's, and as the developer said, it's, you know, he's looking to take care of something that should have been there anyway. You know, and again, we're talking about thirty years ago, that wasn't in the plans, but it, it's still, it does need to be there, so.
Well, another concern, um, is that intersection, I feel like people should be directed towards the bottom. Of Vista Terrace where there is already access, it goes down into the pondos. And you can, um, access that walking anyways, um, I feel like. All the safety concerns should be pointed, I'd like to see the intersection with the light beam, uh. The safety where everybody's coming down there and we're putting infrastructure there before we start talking about putting. Infrastructure where we have access going into Vista Terrace. That's, um, a really bad area, and I don't think we should be directing more traffic there. Uh, walking or biking.
So you'd like to see secondary access?
Yes.
Anything else?
Jack, let's stand up again.
Jack?
I think Jennifer hit the nail on the head. I think the problem with this whole deal is that the planning commission thirty years ago made a mistake of not reserving a right of way to the south. When they originally planted Vista Terrace, if they had reserved a sixty-foot right-of-way headed south. This problem would be a lot easier to solve, and with that being said, I'm wondering if we should require a sixty-foot right-of-way to the north. So that someday, if that piece to the north area, I think it's a doctor's piece. Uh, is ever annexed and subdivided and access there, we can connect this together. I think we need to start thinking about connectivity, because the lack of connectivity here is what's really bothering us.
I, I will say, I doubt the planning commission. Planning commission quite possibly never saw the original Vista Terrace plan, by the way, straight.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be critical of them, but I, I mean, I'm a big proponent of, of us finding a way to access Vista Terrace to the south. And I think this, this emergency access to the north and to the west is, is better than nothing, but it doesn't really solve what we need solved. And, uh, it's definitely, uh, better than not having any emergency access at all, but I would really rather have. A paved road to the pondos or in the future, when, when the stuff behind Ridgeway USA gets annexed and subdivided. We have a right of way to connect.
Do you, do you need any clarification?
No, I think we've been given some more, uh, things to work on, to understand what they are, a memo from TJ and staff, the. The density. And the, uh, the issues that were brought up here. Or usable, emergency, secondary emergency. Access. We'll look at it and, uh, work harder to solve some of those problems, we're narrowing it down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do you have a motion?
Um, I move to continue, uh, the four and subdivision. Sketch plan. For two months.
Two months sound realistic to both staff and development.
We, we need to have this in time. We need a second before we have the other.
I'll second it.
Uh.
Bill already did. Um, is two months out, do we guys?
Yes, sir.
It is.
So that would be the March meeting? March twenty-eighth meeting, um, can I get it, I'll, I'll go down that, please.
Yes. Mr. Lisk?
Hi.
Nelson?
Aye.
Senator Sully?
Aye.
Therefore, Tim Meyer, or Mayor Clark?
Hi.
The chairperson, one of you.
Aye.
Afternoon.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Uh five minute break for the room to center out and you guys can clear your heads.
It's gonna take a little bit.
I know that you found it.
Oh, God, why would I use the thing?
Thank you. Yeah. But hopefully. Nice job, Mark. Nice job. I'd like to give my. Sorry. Got nervous. This part. Yeah. I I always know. Yeah, I I. How are you? Finished.
Cut it, Mark. Lift down the alley.
I'm the other guy. Yeah, he goes. Whatever. Well, I'm sorry to be. Yeah. Get a big one. Here. What? Uh Spencer. It's not. The surprise to me that's the day my birth pattern was participated in. I'm younger. I'm sorry, but this is. I still be. Yeah. Possibly. You're not being quite okay. One two. That might. It's been used for now. Once again. Yeah, I know. I like it. So. Check. Okay. So. Part of the show, I guess. How are you doing? All right. Yes. Thank you. Gee. He. Yeah. I'm. Watch. Of you. Hey. I'm. So. So. I'm. Go on. I'm. Oh.
Camera's ineffective. Something bigger. That's it. Need like a metal platform.
Too much is bigger.
Somebody told me when. Everything looks like it's now.
Interesting to watch. Yeah.
Like. For boss. I'm like. I like yours.
Yeah. Kind of like. Thank you.
No, it's not. It's.
Think the the mic should be reading.
But.
No.
They're not. They're not amplifying.
Are they on?
Uh someone in the back said they couldn't hear us, but I wish they would have spoken up.
Can't hear. I was.
Is your switch low? I don't know. They turned it on.
That's better.
But it's still, you don't be right up on it. You're still. What did you adjust?
Mine's.
The speaker point.
It's the name.
No.
Oh, that's that's the key. It's that thing with the blue light on. All right.
Well, we made it through that. Nobody's in here. They got that. I don't think your mic is on.
Is it? It's 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 on somewhat versus this one. Now.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so boy, how much energy do we have those days?
Yeah, it's you.
My time to be excited.
All right. Uh next item on the agenda is uh Ridgeway Municipal Code Section, Chapter Seven, Section Update. Uh with TJ and Katie and they outlined it very nicely in our packet and made some um pointed out their comments pointed out different uh questions and suggestions, and I believe uh they're gonna lead us through that at this time.
Yeah, thanks. I'm gonna turn it over to Katie here in just a second, but uh what we tried to do, knowing that we might be a little bit fried based on that last agenda item. Maybe you all can tell us what you want to focus on. Obviously, we finished the memo with some questions that we really want to try to get to. But if there's anything that you all saw, I don't want to keep steal Katie's thunder. Um I'm not all the work that she's done. I also want to be quite respectful of of the time, thought process that we can all put in right now. So if there's things that we just want to dive in and not go through a presentation, you let us know.
Well, I saw that some of the comments addressed multiple were addressed in multiple places. So like you needed an answer and it would answer the question in multiple places like the structural size standard table based on setbacks and lock coverage instead of a maximum building size. And that was like in um I listed like five different places where that would need to be updated. Um I'm okay with going through. It might be more um a better process to go through Katie's comments instead of just jump around. So I'm I'm up for that. And if we run out of time, then we schedule another meeting or do something, but I think that's probably the best plan. Preston, you got anything?
I uh yeah, because the room doesn't think I talk or anything, but uh I fully agree with that. I would turn the room over to Katie and let her cut. I think I would imagine she should be walking through the memo and looking for the guidance and the feedback from you all based on how she framed that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's. The best way, even though TJ is trying to let us off the hook.
All right, I'll get going if that works for you then.
I'm just gonna say, this is John. Um I have to be honest, I I just was barely had to under skin everything. I did not have time to to really dive into it, so.
I took a lot of notes, John.
Okay, good.
Okay, we're ready.
Awesome. Great, thanks and good evening. So I will try to stay focused to respect your time, but also it's gonna be great to get some feedback from you. So hop right in here. Okay, so I'm gonna skip. You kind of know the objective of tonight. We went through that in the memo. So moving on to kind of some of the brief synaps, brief summary of the larger changes we made for you. I did want to note a couple of these and I'm gonna go quick. I'm happy to have any of you yell out and interrupt me if you want me to pause on any of it. But a couple of bigger changes, just to make sure you're aware of, is that we did bring, based on feedback, we heard the conditional use permit back to a recommendation from Planning Commission and a decision by Town Council. And the same for the site plan. Um so the commu- conditional use and site plan process, we had kind of been trying to go back. We'd been going back and forth between Planning Commission decision, Town Council decision. Both of those ended up going back or going back in the code as recommendation by the Planning Commission and a decision by the Town Council.
Was that a staff um suggestion?
Primarily came from town staff, correct?
Because that that's puzzling to me because we've always um kind of Plan Commission's always approved conditional use without them needing to go to council.
I don't. Uh Katie, I think what wasn't it a comment from Planning Commission?
I can check my notes as we go through this. Or maybe I'll have TJ pull up those Planning Commission comments.
Yeah, because if John and John's here and if he's okay with it being a simpler process, I think we should consider that.
I'm I'm open, but I I don't see a reason to change it to what it is now necessarily. Um and I believe now you know, chances are just those. Planning Commission only.
That's correct.
So.
So we want to keep it with Planning Commission only unconditional use?
All right, that works great for us and I apologize if somehow we got that miscommunicated. So we.
Plan is new, right?
Correct.
Council in at that stage?
I think site plan is is yeah, important enough.
So I'll let you behind our curve on this one. Okay, then Katie and I have have philosophical discussions on this and theory and you've heard me saying, Katie, that a site plan, once we go through this, a site plan should be as close to administrative as you can get. Because what that means is that you're meeting all of the letter of the code and all the standards. So what I'm hoping, again, this is behind the curtain. What we've come up with, Katie, and I think is that, yes, right now, all projects go of that magnitude go to both Planning Commission and Town Council. We're gonna go ahead and keep that. Slowly over time, as council starts realizing that, you know what, these are just things that meet the code. And essentially you become just a rubber stamp after staff reviews and planning history reviews of the town council. We want to eventually ratchet that back. But we understand that there's gonna be a lot of learning and understanding of how the new code is functioning and set up. So I just wanted to let you know behind the full scope of that's that that's where it should probably head, right? Remove things from planning for town council that don't necessarily. Okay, sorry, Katie.
No, that's great. Thank you. And yeah, I did. I know I didn't elaborate much on it. So ideally, I TJ and I are on the same page with Planning Commission would be great, but we felt like maybe there's a little bit of hesitation going directly that route. Which is why we thought we'd start with um the town council and maybe over the next, like TJ said, ti- over the next few months or year or so, as you look at that, maybe then that can ease up back to the planning commission.
Great.
Sounds good.
Perfect, and thank you for catching the conditional use. That's why we keep coming back to you. So that will go back to Planning Commission in this this table. Okay. Um we are relocating performance standards and we have a couple of questions for you on that, so I'll get into that a little bit more in detail. Um you also might have noticed that, and we brought this up at the last meeting, that based on comments and feedback received from town staff, we're going putting the construction of public improvements back into the major subdivision process. Uh we put some placeholders in the track changes documents you had. You didn't see all the language in there because we want to get some help from the town engineer. But exactly what they think should be submitted. Um so working that out with the town engineer to make sure we have it accurate. You also saw we're proposing a new section devoted to affordable housing. Um we talked about this a little bit more with Preston and TJ and myself just the other day, and we kind of feel like this is great to give you a placeholder for now, uh but the town really needs to have further discussions on and basically come up with level of standards and scope of standards. So we're thinking that this gives you a kind of an outline that you can adopt in the future, but we do think more discussion will be needed on this. Um but at least it kind of gives you some guidance for helping conversations along the way as more discussions. And we know that's a need and a want of the town, so we expect those conversations to take place. And then that new section we drafted will give the town some good talking points and things to think about as they move forward. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. All right, now it's your turn. Putting you on the spot here. Questions for Planning Commission? All right, so performance design and design standards throughout the zone districts themselves, you the town has specific performance standards. Sometimes they're called performance standards. Sometimes they're called performance and design standards. They can relate to things such as parking, uh odor, noise. There's a lot, especially in the industrial district. What we would like to know is are you, oh, is the town okay with us pulling all of those performance standards out and putting them in a general standards for the whole town? So right now you have parking regulations and we've pulled out specific parking standards from zone districts and we've brought them in to the parking regulations for all of town. And we would like to do that with these outstanding items that are hanging out there but don't have a place to go right now. So ideally, we'd have a section for nuisance and then we would drop a lot of those noise, odor, radioactivity, a lot of those industrial performance standards especially into a new category and all of town would follow those own just those um standards for nuisance, for example.
I like it.
I I like it a lot. I think the zone, the industrial one and industrial two uh design standards are are onerous, hard to understand. They overlap each other. They're confusing and they need to be cleaned up. So if we can tidy that up through this process, I'm way in favor of it.
All right, great. And the advantage of that too is then they're townwide. And so if you happen to have uses you maybe didn't think about that are coming in for, say, a conditional use, you have something to refer to if needed. Um so, all right, we will move forward with that.
I I'm concerned about putting parking in there with it. I think package parking is so important. I wouldn't want it to be in the performance standards. I think in my opinion, I think parking should be its own category, but but just an idea.
So yes, so parking actually already has its own category. Um so we'll have parking will remain landscaping remains, lighting remains, and now we're bringing in uh I don't know if we'll call it nuisance. That's what a lot of communities call it, but we'll bring in a new new subject, basically.
I'm guessing the people that aren't speaking out are good with that. So if you're not, speak up. So we're gonna we're gonna be through this.
Could be performance standards uh opposed to nuisance standards.
Yeah.
Which was mentioned, a more positive thing, I think Katie mentioned.
Positive, yes.
So you call it health.
Health?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll do some digging and try to find a good title name. It doesn't sound quite as harsh as nuisance for people.
Those are politically correct counselor.
There's a box of this here. Um simple is better. That's the bottom.
The thing just, sorry, just tidying this up in a little bit, but what we're suggesting is moving standards from individual zone districts to applicable across town.
Yeah.
Correct.
So a smoke standard, say, applies to any use in any zone district. I think that's what we're. Right, so.
We're good.
Having a uniformity will be huge. Yeah, having their cross reference.
Correct.
Yeah.
No, I remember. One one question, though. What about where in the industrial zones, there's kind of more detail about some of the.
So what we'll do and and I don't know if this how much this plays in Katie, but we'll separate things between general standards, right, applicable everywhere and standards applicable to uses.
Okay.
So what we'll say, say it's uh manufacturing, right? We could add additional standards for manufacturing uses. We could add additional standards for manufacturing uses. But again, that applies to any zone district, that's it, not just a specific zone district.
I had it.
I agree with John on that, I think the industrial has the highest uses and I, I think it should have its separate category, but however you all wanna address it.
Does light in, how, would light be included?
So there's already lighting standards in there and so that's gonna remain in there. And then if the zone districts currently have specific light restrictions that are different than what's in the townwide one, they will be brought in the townwide one. And then what we would do is say exceptions within, for example, I one district. Um, and that's kind of what we did with parking, there is a few really unique parking standards in some of the districts. And in the track changes document, you can see that we, under the parking right standards, we actually added some exceptions based on zone district. Those, and so lighting would be very similar to how we handle parking in the track changes document.
And sorry for somewhat belaboring, but it's also fundamental to the structure we're trying to create. That we're putting the standard in one spot, so now you go to the standards section, find all the standards and any exception to that standard is sent you. As opposed to right now, you have to go to each zone district and then through each of the standards and then through each of the prevent, the performance standards to try to figure out how it all fits together. So when we talk, try and get simple, that's what we're setting up, so that if it has a use standard, you go through the uses. If it's applicable everywhere, they're there, your zoning districts are separate, if you will.
We're good. Next.
Alright, alright, we're done then.
Alright, next one here is, and I'm going to, I do want input from the town. I'm gonna let you tell me if maybe you're not ready or in the right mental, um, state to discuss this into detail right now. Uh, so I'll give you the summary and then you let me know how deep you wanna discuss this one. So the overview for drive-in facilities is that in four of the zone districts today, it specifically states drive-in restaurants, theaters, et cetera, are not allowed. So then when you go to see, well, where are they allowed, they're actually not listed in any of the other zone districts. Kind of, uh, do you want drive-ins or drive-throughs is the first question. And if Ridgeway does, then we need some help on what zone districts they should be allowed in, whether by right or by conditional use. And this is something that we talked to Preston about and, you know, CPS doesn't feel comfortable telling you what zone districts to put drive-ins for. We really wanna hear your feedback and what you think about these, so.
I think it has to be conditional use and it shouldn't be by right anywhere, because you guys have said you don't want them.
No, that's not true. Historically, um, they've been allowed in GC. I don't know why they don't show up in the GC zone definitions or. Citizen state, those are both the GC and they both had drive. So we, I do remember discussing this in the past and.
It just didn't make that into the code.
Well, I, it's in the performance standards or something, it's, it was in there somewhere, where it got cut out inadvertently at some point. Um, I don't know, but if.
What'd you do with that?
I remember specifically having a discussion that we did not want drive-throughs or drive drive-ins of any kind in historic business for obvious reasons. But the two banks in town are a perfect example of, that we do allow them. And I don't think, we, I'd have to go back, but I don't think those were allowed to condition use, that they were considered used by right.
So the pot shop could have a drive-through?
Technically. I don't know if they're state allowed. Yeah, I don't know, state allowed.
I think if we're gonna allow them, they should be in GC.
But I'm, I'm open to discussing many, we, Michelle's first thought was we should just make them a conditional use, so that we have more control. But having them anywhere going forward. I'm, I'm not a huge fan of them, but there are businesses like banks that really.
Well, it just seems like there's a bunch of regs that would go with them, like, eh, you know, the, eh, how wide the entryway, all the, all the stuff that has to go with it, that's why I thought conditional, because there's all this other stuff that doesn't seem to be laid out anywhere.
Well, and that's, that's where I was just gonna say that we could add, quite simply, i- if you will, a copy and paste exercise um, to get it in there. It is a use standard, something in use standards for drive-throughs. So that's a good example, when you have a, a drive-through use, you go to the use standards, see drive-through, now you have to meet all those.
Make an appointment.
I, I think we're gonna, with COVID, I think we're gonna see more demand for this. I, I have some friends in Montrose who have a real estate management company and they, they wanted to drive through so bad, they couldn't stand it and bought an old bank building. So I think that's good, as time goes on, we're gonna see more, more need or more desire to have this. So we should figure out where we want it and how we want it.
This, the decision doesn't have to be made tonight, but it sounds like there's maybe support to, uh, provide for a definition. Have some more thought to the zone districts, you know, conditional use, used by rights, but.
Or where they're allowed, I mean, because it sounds like.
The only reasonable place.
I guess my point is, we can certainly stick a pin in it, but, yeah, go have the direction to move forward, actually providing for a definition and then come circle around on this later, and you guys can say, oh, we decided on conditional use in GC, right?
Sure, sure. Sounds good.
But we can talk about it more if you want.
No, we're good, yeah.
Okay, that's good guidance, we will get a little bit of info back to you with some draft language. We also may consider adding something to parking for drive-through queues. Um, uh, just so like, as somebody mentioned with aisles and backup and things like.
Not cutting across the Bay Highway that goes through.
Okay, next one is very similar, board and rooming houses and dormitories. Um, same thing, two districts specifically say not allowed, but we couldn't find that they're actually allowed any, in any other district specifically stated. So same question, does the town want to allow board and rooming houses? That's one category based on definitions and then dormitories being the other. There's actually already definitions in the code for both of them. Um, so we're recommending, we keep the definitions, but we do need some feedback if the town wants to allow those in any district. And if so, by right or conditional use.
I'm looking to John to weigh in.
Well, I know for a fact that this dates to, uh, the last five or 10 years, when there was a lot of talk about Telly Ride wanting to buy properties here in town and turn them into boarding houses for their lift operators and such. Um, there was a rumor at once, at one time that they, they were gonna buy Ridgeway Lodge and turn it into boarding house for their employees. And so we specifically disallowed that, um. I actually heard that they caught.
They have it under contract.
Um, but it, that's, that's the second one, I, um, I don't know, I have a hard time. I mean, I guess you could argue that, uh, like, uh, something like a possible kind of thing would be a affordable tourism option in these crazy defensive times.
But when you leave it under conditional use, then you have more control over that.
Yeah, I, if we're gonna allow it at all in these.
John, I don't like the word boarding house or rooming houses or dormitories, I like the word hostel. And yes, the Teller, Telsky had the super eight under contract and we're gonna close it and turn it into a boarding house, so that we dodged a bullet there.
Um, well, so I, it's, you know, definitions are semantic, so whether we call it a hostel or a boarding house, it's essentially the same thing.
So where are we, conditional use?
Well, how does this affect when there's like an emergency and we have to, um, have like a place for a whole bunch of people to go to, kinda like when we did for the bicycle race? And you have to have room for all these people to go to, it, is that a dormitory or?
That's a great question, it wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't fall under the same definition, but that's a good, good thing to think about. Um, but we could, that would fall under, that would still be allowed. It's more of a community center type thing in temporary.
Yeah, so there's actually two components to that, one being, if it's like that, I mean, then it would be a special event permit that would identify the location. Sort of evaluated, kind of aside from the code, right, within the purview of the code, but not into the strict interpretation, if you will. And then the other would be, uh, critical facilities or emergency management would certainly trump any, uh, code requirement, yeah. Um, so, so I think both of those fall outside of what we're talking about. And maybe, maybe we need to just clarify and make sure that when we talk about the land use code, or sorry, the, the land use table, this table here that, that Katie's going through, we're talking about primary principal uses only. We're not talking about, uh, ancillary uses or, you know, things, uh, uh, um, accessory uses or secondary. It's, it's the main use of the building or, or lot, um, and then other uses fall under it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
So where are we on that? Back to conditional use?
I think so.
Yes, conditional use.
Yes, any specific districts or?
I think we can kind of snaggle something in there in like the, uh, MR, HB, DS and GC, like, we'll, 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 I think we're getting enough.
Whatever seemed appropriate and then you'll come back to us and we'll go, oh no, that's not what we meant at all.
The beauty of these processes.
Yeah.
So Katie, are you gonna talk about the larger lodging discussion?
The bigger elephant in the room?
Uh, bed and breakfast, short-term rental, that type, I did not have on the list tonight. Uh, because I think I want, we wanted to fine tune it a little bit ourselves before we brought it forward.
Well, I, I said, just again, a little seed or behind the curtain, if you will, is that a lot of these have to do with what we're dubbing logic facilities types of, I think they're, they run the gamut. And when you get into, you know, frankly, I don't know that you need a boarding and roommate house and a dormitory and a lift work and a hotel, right? So what we wanna have a little bit larger conversation outside of the purview of this project right now, right? When we start talking about what next steps are, I think one conversation that we wanna propose to have is these lodging types. And look at all the definitions, look at what they are, because I can guarantee you, I don't know them forbid them, but I know there's overlap and when someone comes in and says they do a dormitory, I'm gonna be like, I'm not really sure. Um, you know, and I know lift work is a, a, a difficult kind of definition to work with. Um, you know, so I think we wanna have a larger conversation on all of those.
That's gonna go on the list of things that you wanna put us to address, prioritize to address?
Yeah.
Can't wait for that list, I'm gonna put it under my pull-up.
We have a really good draft already for you, we just are gonna wait till it's finalized, but it's, it's, we haven't forgotten about it. It's actually all pretty looking and everything. Alright, thank you, and thanks for the history, that's what we were really hoping for too, just cause it helps it kind of bring together in our heads a little bit. So I appreciate your guys' knowledge, we get, figure this stuff out. Okay, so building size limitations, um, on the left of the screen that you have is the basic question here. Certain districts have caps on building sizes, so again, this is written narrative within different zone districts that say things such as buildings containing more than twenty-five thousand square feet of gross floor area are not permitted. Um, we, CPS's recommendation, we originally looked at putting these on the right is your existing chart, which has setbacks, lot coverage, things like that for each zone district. We originally looked at moving those specifics for footage caps into this chart. But we felt that the best option is really just to take out those caps, because that's what you have lot coverage and setbacks and other dimensional requirements for to limit the size of a building. But we didn't feel comfortable just deleting those random clauses on you without you being aware of it and making sure you were okay with it. Um, so happy to explain more if you got sure what we're talking about, or go ahead and let me know what you think.
I'm in favor of that unless there's some historic reason that it's not a good idea.
No, I think historically, this is a good example of the kinds of things that over the years have, um, found their way into the code in kind of reaction to perceived, well, like the, the big box store.
Perceived threats.
Yeah, perceived threats is exactly what I'm talking about, um. This, this was, a lot of it came from trying to prevent big box stores, Chris, cool. Um, so I, I'm open, I, you know, I, in short, I think all this stuff we're talking about is really helpful in, in terms of simplifying the code, making things more logical and straightforward. Um, a lot of discussion about the space crate building being so big and it had to get a variance to be, you know, built. And that's a perfect example of something that we all need. Um, so, I'm, I'm open.
Um, I guess my question would be, is there, basically if we get rid of the rose floor area thing, what's the maximum size building that would be allowed based on a lot size, like, could you guys just calculate that up?
So you would first of all, look at the site that the person is proposing to build on? And then you would have to look at the maximum lot coverage for that site. So for example, in MR district, kinda going right across the middle of the chart. Let's say you had a mixed use in the MR district, it has to be sixty percent lot coverage is the maximum. So basically forty percent open space, grass, impervious, um. So that, it would be sixty percent of the size of the lot they're developing on.
Now, that includes parking and walkways and everything.
And say someone had the ability to buy like two neighboring lots, they'd still need to get approval to combine those lots rather to do, to pull off a larger building, so we still have say in that.
Mm-hmm, and you'd be looking at a site plan review process for those larger buildings too now.
So you guys, since you're recommending it, don't see a problem with getting that out of there and just using, your recommendation sounds good.
Uh, yeah, but in, in light of the reasoning for it, that makes perfect sense, definitely throw out there, Katie, that, that we put in a definition called, a definition for big box store and make it anything over generally, um, fifty thousand square feet is the big ones, maybe we do twenty-five thousand. And just by putting the definition in there and not having it in the use table, you prohibit it. Um, uh, so if, if there are some places that you want it, you can put it in GC as conditional. I, I, I get that concern completely.
I think we just put the definition and say no, and then if someone were to approach us with a reasonable thing, then we could, we could both grant that, right?
Not if it's not in, uh, it's not listed.
What about, what about manufacturing? Uh, I mean, it, we're probably in a, in a place where some outdoor, uh, manufacturers might find, eventually find Ridgeway, uh, uh, a good place to, uh, to project for a, uh, sizable manufacturing plant of some sort. What, what, where would that fall in this, on, on this table?
They'd have to start with housing.
Yeah, it would start, same thing, zone district it's in, then you'd look at the property size they're trying to build on. And then assuming, let's just say it's in the I one or I two district, it would be a fifty percent maximum lot coverage. So that would be less than fifty percent of their lot could be building when you take in parking and other things to equal fifty.
Okay, so there's no square footage requirement or maximum, right? The other thing I wanna throw out there that we're, I'm still a little bit of Katie's thunder, I think we're gonna talk about it. That, uh, we're, we're codifying the construction design guidelines in here as well. So the other thing that you don't have right now, that really impacts the ability to, um, what a building could be, is your architecture design guidelines. If you require breaking up a plane every twenty-five, fifty feet, whatever that number is, right? By a minimum articulation, that means set stepping back the building. You get rid of, you reduce or minimize the impacts of a large scale building, as you now reduce the form and the massing of it. Um, so if we wanna do something and move away from the square footage, we would wanna increase the, the, the design guidelines. Now that wouldn't affect anything with, you know, a big manufacturer coming in, they make articulation in the wall, project different heights on the building, right, add some, uh, features and things to break it up. Um, so there's some, some architecture features that could do that as well.
You need us to give you a clearer answer.
I wanna hear what Jack says too, he's got his hand up.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of all this, I wanna capitalize on what Bill said. Um, my concern, I think we're gonna have to have a cap or a cap, anything above a cap is, is a, is a conditional use permit. Because uh in the GC, we have that lot that we were just brought by uh Joe and Jack for uh residential. That's east of uh Remax and it's uh six or eight acres and it's GC. We would never allow a sixty percent site coverage ratio, and at least I don't think we would. That'd be a huge building, so I think we have some big lots that could have big buildings as, as Bill's mentioning. So we need to be aware of that, we don't have any really in the industrial or we don't today. But there's, there's some out there in Ridgway USA that could, could uh bite us in the back of the foot.
So then what I guess I'm hearing, again, trying to move forward, get this kind of going. Set you up for success is maybe we look at reviewing in more detail. Design standards, the guidelines for architectural design and both commercial and residential. And potentially even add a resi- uh industrial, right? Um, but you probably have enough right now and there's not an imminent threat, if you will, of Walmart coming in or anything. So I think what we might do is just follow along with what we're proposing. And address it as it comes up.
What about putting in the definition, like you said, for now, and that could get changed later, let me get the other stuff lined up, just to. I C Y A.
The big box.
Yeah.
I potentially, based on some of this conversation, see that more limiting than beneficial. I don't think you have lots right now that could do that.
Okay.
I think everything that comes in right now will go through something and require.
Other than the ones that Jack just mentioned.
But that has a P U D on it right now, so it couldn't do anything. It, it's limited by its P U D.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yeah.
As long as that's not gonna come back and bite us anywhere, I'm okay with it.
I think we should have, I, I, I just have an idea, can we have like a big box warning, you know, like a special category, say, if you're a big box, you better read this?
Turn back now while you're still.
Be careful.
Uh, uh, we could very easily, I think, add a definition of big box store and that ties directly to retail. Not manufacturing and it's defined as above whatever number, you know, the number that's in here, Katie is twenty-five, right? Is kind of the number, so we can define it as twenty-five thousand and it requires a, a conditional use in, in the GC zone. And leave it at that, that covers your base, it means it's not allowed in anywhere else. It doesn't prevent uh re- uh industrial, it, it would reverse by definition. To just the retail or other service type building.
I think it could be a manufacturing building, I, I kind of agree with what Bill said. We, you know, we've been approached by a huge brewery at one time that wanted to do a twenty thousand square foot building in industrial park. So I don't think it should just be retail or service, it could be manufacturing, but it's your call.
Yep.
Is good feedback though to think about with the design standards too, um. We'll play with it, I feel like I've got enough. In my head and enough notes to work with it a little bit. We're not gonna just straight out remove everything and lose it on you, we'll make sure we kind of keep it in the loop of what we do.
So you can clean up the code and still protect us.
Their goal, right? That's why we need to hear what you want for the town, so thank you. All right, next step. All right, so these are just some random individual performance standards that are listed. It shouldn't really say all districts, but in certain districts. And for different reasons, we are looking to potentially delete these. But again, kind of thing that we didn't feel comfortable deleting without running it by the town first. Um, so I believe there are six of them here, so one of them, all professional and service, huh, one second, sorry, my screen's blocked.
Yeah, I think your comments were really good on these.
Okay, does anyone, do you want me to go through them or do you wanna just stay if you agree with them or need to discuss them?
Awesome, yeah, we may, let's go through them individually, in case you guys didn't read through.
Okay, um, so the first one is within the DS district. We, there is currently a line, a standard that states professional office and service businesses. Allowed with conditional use shall have no more than five employees. Um, we felt that's a bit excessive to limit the amount of employees in land use regulations. Um, but, so we were thinking about removing it for that reason, but any.
Also have no one to enforce that, it, it's just.
Yeah.
Is anyone interested in history?
Yeah, I'd love the history.
Uh, I think it largely had to do with parking and um, I mean. You gotta realize it's the, the DS district is just the half a block that runs Highway sixty-two all the way through town. Uh, in the residential HR, historic residential zone, um. We felt really strong, then we, we, at one point, we had a lot of pressure to do a full-on like HB. Rezone all along the highway through town, so that there could be more businesses and like mini-marts and stuff. We felt really strongly, we did not want to commercialize Highway sixty-two further through town beyond what. Our existing downtown already is, but we did see the value to professional offices, dental offices, lawyer's office, these things like that. But it's, it's so shallow that the zone that. We thought the potential for a, a business getting big enough that it needed a lot of employees and thus a lot of parking. Was gonna adversely impact neighboring residential properties, so that's, that's where it came from, I believe. Plus C dot uh limited any access immediately off of.
Yeah, you have to turn onto the side streets.
So. We, we just felt that you, there wouldn't be room in that half block. On either side to fit more than five, five employee cars. And not to mete- uh customers.
I agree with Bill and John, I think we should keep this.
Have the parking regulations been modified at all since then to capture parking spaces based on the type of use and square footage? Which kind of takes into account the number of employees?
Um, not in this example, the, the DS overlay is so interesting because it's, it's basically an overlay of, of. The existing historic residential, so historic residential doesn't have any parking requirements. Uh, at least, there's, it's been discussed in this, but in fact, there was, there was a time where we didn't have. Parking regulation, it's become even an HB, it's just park on the street.
I think what they're suggesting is there might be a better place to do this. Were you trying to say, no, you guys are suggesting.
Oh. Yes, but if you don't feel the parking regulations capture that security that you usually have in parking regulations. So, but I'm curious to hear what TJ thinks from when he's worked on projects.
Let me just say that real quick and then TJ can respond. I, I said before and I'll say again, I, I'm excited to have you guys, you pros. Take a look at our, our antiquated parking rigs and come up with some more modern parking rigs. Cuz our parking rigs are definitely fully antiquated, so if you have solutions for this, you know, more modern parking rig. Setup, then I'm all, all ears.
So, um, thank you. I, I think that, that what we can certainly do, Katie, is, is look at this with a little bit, a little different lens, let's, let's think about this one. What I, I guess where my mind is going right now is that there are, in case you didn't know, it's a trend in my thought process. There are more potential negative consequences of removing this than positive consequences of removing it. So I think we leave it in, that, with that being said, you all might remember. We came through, I don't remember what, was the wildfire. Uh, they're in the sound district. Before they took clothes here, they were like, okay, we have two full-time employees, we got like twelve people who work with us. But only three or four are gonna be there at any one time, right? And so it's like, gosh, what does that mean? Um, how do you count employee and, and in theory, your zone district should look at the use, not the operations. When you look at an employee, that's an operation, right? And so just from, from where that's going, so where I think we're maybe going with this. And, and it might be a simple exercise, cuz I know it's not very big, but maybe we just look, Katie, at those, the properties of your zone DS. And just, one, nothing's probably been changed drastically, the lot size, they're probably small enough. Where if we were to do some quote-unquote scenarios, say what could go in here and. Require more than five or six, eight parking spaces, is, how feasible is it? Then we can at least have a little bit of a gauge there. Um, you know, just do some very basic back of the napkins and, and skip ideas and see what that could be. Um, and then we'll put a little, if, if we decide that there's not much benefit to doing anything. Let's just put a pin in this one and add to the list.
Sure, I drove by there the other day and there was all these cars lined up on the street and I'm like, oh my God, what is going on here? And the parking lot was empty cuz they were getting ready to plow it, but it was a good example. The fire one up on Amelia, the old house. You know, it was a perfect example of like, oh my God, look at this parking mess, but it was a temporary thing.
Yeah, yeah, and just another example of where probably this plays in, it's actually Bo's office. I think they have a parking agreement property next door and now that property wants, or across the alley. And so now that property wants to develop, we've talked with them. We're like, okay, how does that play into it? So parking is always an issue. And when you start tying parking to employees or, it, it just gets really kind of convoluted. So, we'll, we'll take a look at it and see, okay.
And it's, I know we do have parking on that future list for the town to take a look at for regulations, so.
Awesome, security.
All right, um, DS district still, business hours shall be between seven-thirty AM and five-thirty PM. This may end up having some reasoning behind it, like the one above it, so.
I, I think the DS is a, is a high-impact area, I, I agree with Bill and John about this. I'm, I've, we tried to limit the impact by limiting the employees and the hours and that might not be the way to, to limit it. Uh, I think, I think initially our concern was that we're, we're adding a commercial use or potential office use to a residential area. And that was.
We were trying to solve.
Minimize that impact.
That use, definitely, that's, it's all about taking a, a residential. Historic residential zoning district, allowing some limited commercial with, and, and really trying to ratchet down the. The impact that we would have on the neighboring residential property too.
Okay.
I, probably a better way to do that than parking or employees.
Yeah, I think this one can go like the similar one above, we'll take a look and kind of incorporate this. I admit, I wanna now kind of take a look at the zone map a little bit better and get a feel for it too, so.
What I'm kind of thinking, what's framing in my brain is that, we're gonna go against some other things, but it's probably good to intern status. Leave performance standards in the DS zone, cuz essentially we know standard standards, right? Standard standards for the DS zone are gonna include these things. I think that makes some sense to put in there, cuz that's a district thing, not a use. Any use in the zone district will follow these standards. So Katie, maybe we just do that, throw all of these just right in the DS zone as performance standards and call it good for now.
Yeah, this is an unusual.
Okay. Let's see, and DS semi-truck traffic, we'll put that in the same category, that one for now, if that's okay. All right, so now we're moving into I-one district, traffic to and from the site shall not overload or damage street systems. To or from the site verification, this provision should be confirmed. So why we're talking about removing, suggesting removing this is because now you'll have the site plan review process. And traffic reports are gonna be required to be submitted based on the scope of the project. And that will account for this performance standard, so it'll actually be looked at with every application in town that meets the site plan review threshold. Um, it's the same, the next one is the same for I-two district. So we think we're capturing it through the site plan review process. But definitely let us know if you feel like it needs to stay in there separately.
There's, but, there's much less uh truck traffic in the industrial park than I ever had envisioned. I mean, we have parking issues, they're not really truck traffic issues, so. I don't, I don't see it as a concern.
Okay, and like I said, it'll always be reviewed with the site plan process, um, so it's gonna be captured there also. So, all right.
Be okay with that.
All right, and then, oh, this one, I don't know how you're gonna feel about this one, um, general commercial district. It seems from any perspective strange that there is a thirty-five foot height limit. Maybe allowed if approved as a conditional use. So technically, if you go over a height, you should get a variance. It doesn't have anything to do with what a conditional use should be, cuz it's not a use. But I'm sure I'm gonna get some feedback on this one, which is why I wanted to bring it up.
Well, yeah, you, you got some feedback for me, uh, in, in that a conditional use is revoked. And if you, if you, if it's. Yeah, it's like, well, your conditional use is revoked and by the way, you have to laugh off of top by two building. It, it just makes no sense to me. Uh, uh, a variance uh makes, makes sense. But it, it, but conditional by definition is revoked.
This shouldn't be a refrain.
So.
Okay.
Something better than conditional.
Okay.
It makes sense, I'm trying to think if I can come up with a. Little history that might explain it, I think that one goes way back, that one's um. Probably dates to the eighties or nineties, um. Well, it last came up with the farmhouse, uh, in the, the.
Tower?
The, yeah, the tower part, uh, which went up to what, forty uh feet? Uh, as, as an atrium sort of thing, but that was part of. A culinary school at the time that was. And I think that was handled as a variance too, cuz that's not GC, that's HB, it is, I think it was handled by as variance.
Which is what Bill said, it should be, it shouldn't be a conditional.
I, I think it makes sense for it to be.
So that can go away?
That's conditional can go away, certainly seems to change. Well, the, the question is, is it thirty-five feet or is it twenty-seven? I mean, I think the development right across the street is twenty-seven, conditional use through thirty-five. So there wasn't a variance, it's like, we can do this, so why is it not thirty-five? Or is it really intended to be thirty, twenty-seven? Yeah, that's my question.
So I think that's what I could say, if that's the question, cause is. That when you start looking at commercial buildings, you're looking at basically eleven, eleven and a half feet per story. Plus, if you have elevator, you're looking at additional feet. Now we have provisions in here to allow elevator shafts to extend into the height. Uh, for certain square footage kind of things. Um, so if you're looking at, see your quick math, I believe that a three-story, a two-story building, you basically need thirty-two feet. To, to, I think that's the number that I have in my head, thirty-two feet for two stories is essentially the round number. Says if you wanna get it in there, that's what it is, if you want, so basically with twenty-seven feet, you're gonna get a whole bunch of variances. Because commercial construction standards are gonna be above that. So if you want two stories, go with thirty-two, thirty-five.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so I don't think, you know, uh, I don't think you're gonna get three stories in thirty-five.
Well, you said that. With, with eleven and.
Oh, I guess that's the question, right? So don't worry so much about the dot, the, the footage, how many stories do you want? And then we can go back and do the math to get that.
Again, there's a three-story going across, going in across the street, not yet, there will be, that's at thirty-five feet. What are you, you're talking about?
The unaffordable housing.
The, the one that'll be right across, they've had the two, two stories, three-story scheduled. They've had the two, two stories, three story scheduled right across the street, leaving the street comments that, that next phase is thirty-five. Supposed next phase, yes. Well, I hear they're changing, so.
Now, the other explicit, what you're talking about.
That is, that is a general commercial.
Oh, you're talking about the district, but it's a residential building, so I suppose. And the other part about that, it has to do with the definition of how to measure.
Yeah.
Right, with the pitch group, you're going to the metal. So it could actually be forty-seven, forty-two, forty-three feet tall. To, to roof that, or to. Well, I guess, maybe if, if I'll just throw this out there, we'll look at the district, come up with a number that kind of makes sense, throw it out there, see what you guys think. Um, and we'll base it on two and a half, three stories.
Good.
Good.
We'll also look at that forty feet, I know that there is, uh. We've talked about this in the past and I don't know if it's time to look at it or not, but. We have provided enough variances. For over thirty-five feet, you know, forty to low forties. Uh, with something I know that we've talked about, actually setting a zone where it's okay to do that. Because we have multiple variances, uh. You were bringing up one just a little while ago, and then we've also got like. Well, so then the firehouse, the bank building with the elevator shaft and stairs and all that. Is, is getting into that, so.
Yeah, let's, let's put a pin in that one, because he has some ideas and I think I threw some ideas out there and didn't meet next of early on in this. Just getting started going too far.
Okay.
Um, but there are some ways to address some of that stuff. I guess what I'm hearing, if I'm hearing correctly, is reduce number of variances, allow what makes sense in the district. Is that correct? So, so what we can do is look at the district, figure out what the intent of that district is, and based on current. Building practices, come up with something that makes sense.
I like that idea.
So it's a burden of conditional use right now, so.
Let's get broken.
That would, in, in use a lawsuit.
Indicial use.
All right, keep, ready to keep going here?
Sure.
Okay, and these are things that we would like to move forward with, um, but again, want your confirmation with. On, so we have, okay, I think you're gonna like this one. Change the name of the industrial district, this has been brought up. Um, it was brought up at first that we just removed the duplicative one and two that's in the name. But we were thinking that maybe we go into a light industrial, LI district. And a GI general industrial to really just separate those two districts. Now, the one thing to give you a heads up on, and we did talk to Preston about this, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have his okay with it. Is it does require not only changing the terms of the districts, those industrial districts throughout the whole code, but it also will take. Um, adopting a new zone map with those name changes, which we would do concurrently as this gets to that point. The code, chapter seven gets to that point.
Totally in favor.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good one.
There we go. And it passes unanimously.
Perfect.
I think while we're looking at those, we need to look at the, the light industrial, the, the I one and I two, or light industrial in general. Uh, industrial uses, they're, they overlap, they're confusing, and I, I. If you would ask me what's the difference between light industrial and, uh, have the general industrial. I would say the only thing that I can find by reading it is the, the amount of storage, outside storage.
It is very duplicative. It made it easy for me to put it in the table of uses.
They're very confusing and I think they need to be tidied up.
Do we need to at all?
Yeah.
That's actually kind of coming up a little bit too, so. Yes. All right, um. I was gonna go skip to it, but then I'll forget my place here, so we'll get back to that industrial question. The TJ already gave you a heads up on this one earlier. The commercial design standards right now are a separate document, and we'd like to adopt them into the code itself. The same way that the residential design standards currently exist. Um, at this point, unless kind of maybe we'll think a little bit about it because of building footprints and architectural design for commercial that we talked about. We're not planning on changing the design guidelines, standards that exist for commercial. But we are proposing to potentially reformat it a little bit, so it matches the general outline we're trying to follow for the code.
Uh, Preston's giving us a head nod, so we're going yes on that.
Okay, sounds good. Great.
Uh, just kind of riffing off some of the previous conversations, should we also add a industrial. Design standards and use very basics of articulation, break up the wall plate, different materials. Different features, just to, so that we don't get a massive commercial industrial building. You can do something very basic, but again.
It looks like the right answer is yes, so we're going with yes.
Okay.
Okay. Got it. Okay, next one is, um, accessory uses are kind of convoluted. Obviously, you didn't have a land use table, so we made it convoluted by trying to bring existing uses and districts into that table. So what we want to do is create a new section for accessory uses and structures and put that under the standards for the whole town wide. Um, very simple, it's used in most communities that way, it would be, it would not take us a lot of time to come up with a draft for you. We just wanted to make sure you were okay if we create this new section of accessory use and structure standards for you.
Uh, yeah, no contest on that.
Okay. And I just gotta make notes each time, even when it's a yes or else, next week I was trying to remember and say, what did they say? Thanks for your patience as I paused her right here.
This is being recorded, you can check the recording.
Oh, that's true. Okay, here we go, this, um, Jack kind of gets back to what you were saying, so. That land use table, as we pulled all the individual uses into that table, it really got pretty convoluted. Um, there's a lot of primarily industrial uses that, oh, sorry, that's my only bullet on this one. Um, that overlap are very similar to other uses, and especially going into limit, uh, light industrial. And having that be more light uses, we'd like to just kind of, not just industrial, but for all of the table. Consolidate the uses that sound very similar and really look funny being on different rows. And basically, we'd have a definition that would encompass all of those, uh, subcategories we're consolidating, so. It's gonna probably be a lot better, and I would expect that there wouldn't be any concern with this. But at the same time, if you see the land use table from what it is now to what it might become, it'll still be long. But you'll see a lot less duplication that looks similar.
And well, you'll show it to us with the red lines, so we can look at it. Yeah. There we go.
Okay, and you can always tell us now and go back a step, but it looks pretty, especially as Jack brought up with industrial uses it. There's a lot of things specific to industrial and manufacturing that we can't figure out why it's a different row. Than the other uses have for some of them too, so.
Services was a good example.
Yeah, thank you.
Where in the light industrial zone, there's a services. That was different than the professional services and others, right? So it's just little things like that. That are probably clerical issues or items, and so again, it's just cleaning it up, simplifying it. Uh, and it kind of goes back to boarding rooms, boarding and rooming houses versus dormitories. And what's real difference, right? Yeah. Um, is, is there really, from a land use perspective, a difference between those? Right? When you look at it from a land use perspective, what's the impact of it? The impact's probably second, people are renting a, a room for a night or two, it has to do with size.
Semantically, a boarding house, you're served meals. Uh, because it's room and boards, the word is.
Different than say a bordello.
Just.
Well, that's exactly it, it becomes.
So my pet peeve here is, is commercial parking, commercial parking is only a use by right in GC. So if, if we had a commercial parking lot, we probably wouldn't want it on the freeway or where it's visible. We'd probably want to tuck it away in another location like the industrial park, so I think we need to look at these uses and put them in the appropriate locations.
Okay, and I should clarify, we're not looking at this point to change locations necessarily. Right now, it'll just be trying to consolidate the uses that sound the same. Um, and then we probably, depending on direction from the town. Put analyzing the uses per district on a future discussion with the town, um, unless we got directed to do that now. So I think that's a lot bigger conversation, I think it's needed, and it's on that list for future.
It's definitely needed.
The list.
Oh, yeah, fun, the list is, I've been working on a land use table update for the city of Leno for five years.
Oh no, that's not the fun part.
But they probably have a really pretty looking list of update that makes people want to look at it.
So I think that's it.
Come on.
All right, uh, we had, we didn't get you the PUD section, so if there were questions on that, we are gonna go through it again. But honestly, it's what we talked about last time. Um, we just didn't quite get to fine tuning that one in time for you. So.
Cool.
All right.
So we're still on schedule, we're looking at, uh, one extra month.
Yeah, that feedback helps, um. I definitely feel like after what we talked about tonight, we need to make changes through track changes, so you can see them. And then she'll give you time to review all of them, obviously before it goes to a hearing, because there are a few things we also said we take a look at. Try to make it adapt a little bit, but I don't want to do any of it and throw it to you at a public hearing, so. I would say we're on track to keep making changes based on what we heard, but I want to make sure we're giving you enough time to review all those documents. Also prior to going forward to a hearing.
Good.
Did the, um, work session already happen, or? That was just the scenarios work session that we had, um, early in the month, two weeks ago. Oh. Or three weeks ago or whatever, um, yeah, so that was just the work session where we went through those scenarios. We didn't go through the actual code language itself that time, good, good catch.
So I guess from this point forward, I mean. I guess my thought would be, we could use a special meeting between now and. February meeting and make, asking a question in the form of a statement. Um. To kind of go over some of these things and. Updates that we make, answering these questions. Um. Then I think.
We could do it on February fourteenth.
Oh, I love it.
I already have a meeting that deep, TJ's gonna have to solo that one then.
I probably need that day too.
I've got a general question here, I mean, are we under a lot of pressure to get this completed? Are developers pacing outside, uh, Preston's office? Or is this self-imposed pressure to get this done quicker, just because we want to be on our timeline? I just, I haven't heard anything about. If, if there's a bunch of people flipping out that we, we were making them wait.
I'm not aware of anyone flipping out, that's a good question, and I, I don't have a pulse on. Uh, who, if anybody is, is chomping at the bit to submit a development application, Jack, so appreciate your question.
Yeah, I think that they're gonna need some time to digest what we do. Yeah, uh, so I, I don't. I, self-imposing pressure, and I'm, I'm expert at it, but I prefer not to do it.
Yeah, Jack, thanks for those thoughts, I just wanted to say a couple of things. Town council is a workshop on, uh, a town council meeting next week on the eighth, and a workshop on February fifteenth, it's a Wednesday. So just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Um, and workshops devoted to the topic of rural housing revenue, if you're interested in that. Um. Or where mine goes is you all didn't have a whole lot of time to delve into this stuff, but we got the, these materials to you the last Wednesday. Yeah, last Wednesday, so you know, less than a week's time to really delve into it and. Fully understand if you didn't have, uh, the, you know, the amount of time to feel prepared for this evening. So I would suggest, this is, this is just my opinion, that we utilize the regular February meeting. Which is, I think, on the twenty-eight, something like that.
Twenty-eight.
Uh, for another update, I'm thinking out loud, so I'll be thinking through this, and we aim to get updated materials. AD TJ, uh, you know, ten, ten days, fourteen days in advance to afford you guys some more time. Uh, and then we aim for the, the planning committee, the more formal planning commission hearing on. Uh, you know, with an ordinance, the red lines, clean version of the code that they've been working so hard to, to. To modify, uh, maybe potentially the March regular meeting, we call it special meetings. At some point in March, you just gauge it as we go, and then town council after that. All of that, again, stems from Jack's comment about, you know. TJ and Katie had identified a timeline at the forefront, and we're, you know. We're not on that track, right? It's fallen a little bit behind, but for good reason, with some really good conversations and. Um, I, you know, again, I don't, I don't, I think the community and certainly everyone in the room will understand. Uh, first of all, that the moratorium will need to be extended, at, at least a little bit to accommodate the work that still needs to be done. Uh, so just keep that in mind, but, uh, that, that's also because of my thought.
I think that most people in the community were in favor of the moratorium for one reason or another. Um, and my reasoning for keeping it moving is simply that that's the time that we set. So I wanted to keep it moving, um, but I don't think that that should get in the way of the, the quality of this work. Is more important, and like Jack said, that, you know, it's the self-imposed pressure is unnecessary. My other thought on keeping it moving was that we get to work on, you know, what's identified, keep it going. But yeah, the pace does not need to be breaknecking, so, um. I'm okay with that, I question if, given us the extra time to review it for the February twenty-eighth. If we shouldn't set a, a meeting or whatever comes next sometime in mid-March and not wait till the end of March for the. For that meeting, are my thoughts.
I think our neck was broke last weekend.
What?
I think our neck was broke last weekend. Breakneck speed.
Right, right. So what is the next process after we would look at it at the twenty-eight, on the twenty, what'd you say, a ordinance or what?
I, yeah, I think if, and correct me if I'm wrong, TJ, uh, we would live to draft or reformal ordinance. That would enact these code revisions.
Doesn't it not have to go to council?
It does, but certainly would want to, you know, formal recommendations from the planning commission.
Which would be an ordinance.
Well, yeah, we would, we would want you all to, to look at the whole package, including the ordinance, enacting these modifications to the code. With the formal recommendations, of course, the town council's gonna be interested in that, given the substantial amount of time you've spent. Uh, working on all of this, so, and after that, it would go, uh, through the, the, the process of. Uh, the, the public hearing process of the town council level, two readings of an ordinance, introduction, and then final reading. Uh, and then enacted thirty days after that.
So if it has to go to two council meetings, that's thirty days apart. So if we're not doing our ordinance until after the council meeting in March, then that's April and May.
Preston, first reading in council before planning question? I, that's not typically, that's not typical, I, I probably would recommend that, interesting.
So just, just putting it out there, if we're okay with that, that puts us into May.
Another, yeah, another piece to this is, uh. You know, we need to talk to legal counsel, but not sure if it's fully necessary for you all to provide a recommendation on. You know, on the ordinance and the structure of the code, it's given that you spent all these months getting into where it needs to be, right? Uh, perhaps, I'm just thinking, uh, perhaps the February meeting will certainly make a recommendation for it to council at that point. If we're trying to break next speed, yeah, I think.
Well, I'm just saying, if, if council doesn't approve it till May, then we're not using it until May or after that, right?
Thirty days, thirty days after.
Um, so that, that, then we're in June. If, if that's okay with everyone, that, so be it, but I just wanted to make sure we're aware that it's.
One thing I will say, and I, I know, no other information than this, Chris Hawkins, who, who works with multiple developers in town. Came up to me after the hearing and said, he has a whole book of comments, talking through them, and they seem pretty simple. But he did say that he has, uh, quite a few potential.
But he did say that he has, uh, quite a few potential clients who are interested in this getting adopted to submit under the new code. As opposed to the current code. So that I, I don't think anybody is knocking down doors to to come in. But I do think there's some eyes on it. Again, not the reason to do it, right? Getting quality over. Quick. It is is always the goal, but I I wanted to at least throw that out there. So I guess all in all timeline wise, I saw everybody turn their eyes at me, and it was said, I I think what we'll, Katie, what we'll proceed with at this point is. Uh, let's, at this point, keep going ahead, let's plan. Or at least try really, really hard. To come to planning commission in February with as done of a document as possible.
Cool.
And and tidy it up. We'll do our best to do that. There may. Be some things that we need to complete or finalize, but we could. Preston's point, even if we did need to have a formal recommendation from this body, we could do it that at that time with commissions, right?
Yeah. Um, so real quick, TJ, Katie, is it possible to have? Everything ready to go to send to planning commission by, uh, Tuesday, February fourteenth?
That's what I put on my notes.
I love it.
Great, that's awesome.
I heard what you said. I appreciate you giving me a two-week warning at least.
Well, if it's not, if it's not possible, you know, let us know, we can, we can, yeah, we can.
I think it's better that we have that a date to aim for. Uh, to be honest, I'd rather have something that keeps us moving on it with so many projects coming in all over right now. I think it'd be good for us just to have that date and aim for.
So if that didn't work, we would set a, uh, special meeting in early March to do the same thing we're planning on doing on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, essentially. The last thing I'll say is, uh, Katie, TJ, and I will, uh, be meeting with. Joanne, uh, Joyce, our new engineer, and, uh, related development review, and and Bo, our legal counsel, on tomorrow, Thursday. What we'll do is, uh, we're gonna devote an hour to talking about chapter seven updates. We will. We will, uh, put our heads together and come up with a modified timeline that we think will work, that we can present to you all. Um, on the twenty-eighth, and, you know, re-gauge it from there, was that sound? We call ourselves the training team.
Well, that's really good to know. Who's? Do you guys have t-shirts? Did you print t-shirts for that?
Yeah, we will.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Uh, who who's Joyce? Is she, you said something about a new engineer?
We. Yes, we have a new engineer. I was gonna wait till the end for updates, but, uh, the town. Uh, issued an R F P in late twenty-twenty-two, seeking firms to. Provide engineering services that are related to the development review. And so we went through the whole, uh, uh, R F P process, interviewed firms, and Switewater Solutions LLC. Uh, they have a presence here at Ridgeway, uh, came out on top of that process. Joyce Wong. Uh, who lives just a couple of blocks away from here, is, uh, the the new point of contact principal engineer from that firm that will be spearheading development. Review from the engineering perspective, so really excited about that.
Yeah, that's way exciting.
Oh, boy.
What?
So.
What other news do you have, Preston?
Are we ready for his updates, or does he still have anything to wrap up?
Are we done with this, you guys?
I am all set, and I just wanted to say one more time, thank you. I feel like eighty percent of that stuff was that we discussed tonight. I really needed to hear your feedback on. And it definitely makes me happy. I didn't just go and try to straight through stuff, so thank you. Appreciate your time tonight for sure, and now the history of why things are the way they are, so.
And thanks for your work on this, Katie.
Yeah, exactly.
They really.
Thank you.
Your guys' work.
We we're going over just reading it. You've been like intimately involved with it for months.
I like it. It's good. If only TJ wouldn't stop banning me from coming back and forcing me to sit in the office.
I have to say, I I was kind of nervous about this. I was more than nervous about this process, and I've been totally impressed. You guys have been hitting it out of the ballpark.
Yeah.
But I was naively all for it. Yay, let's go.
It wasn't that I wasn't for it, it's just that I wasn't sure that it was gonna go.
So well.
As well.
So I will say too, just, um, some kind of a C Y A for Katie and I, that we have been. Linging stuff into this package. You're probably going to see what what her and I need to do is go through with a pretty fine tune cone. Between now and then, you'll probably see a lot of edits that are not substantive. Some little requirements, process things, clean up, like, try. Um, so just know that you'll probably see something that's that's not vastly different, but looks like there's a lot of changes. And it's because we're gonna go through and make sure that this section cross references that section correctly. So you'll see all of those.
Is that when all the X X dot X?
Uh, we might not do that yet.
Okay.
Because that's kind of the final thing.
Just curious.
But, um. Maybe.
And then there'll be the like clicked on this that'll lead you to that stuff.
Yeah, so when it gets adopted to Munich, that's a Munich thing.
Ah.
Because they'll.
Okay.
Excellent.
Uh, anything else on this before we move on?
Okay, I'm gonna sign off. Everyone have a great night and thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Thanks for being there.
Bye.
Um. I have to get back to my agenda here. Our work session is now complete. Uh, we're moving on to approval of the minutes of the January test meeting in twenty-twenty-three. Thank you, second. You can pick either one. And everybody was there, so everyone can vote on it. Uh, roll call, do we need a roll call? Please. Um. Commissioner List.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Patrick Sully.
Hi.
Mayor for Timmy.
Hi.
Uh, Mayor Clark.
Hi.
And Sheriff Ramon.
Hi.
Two question.
Can't we just say it passes unanimously, even when there's people on Zoom?
It because people on Zoom, we have to document more clearly.
We have a like, uh, participation policy that that governs our voting.
Oh.
Attending virtual.
I see.
If everyone's not ready, you can say all of it.
Um, updates from planning commission members.
I will not be at the February meeting, but I will be here for March.
Not on Zoom either?
No, I'll be in New Zealand.
Okay, they don't have Zoom there?
They they don't in the mountains that I'm gonna be in.
I wanna go there.
Pardon?
I wanna go there.
Yeah, we all wanna just go away.
Oh, uh, the. Jennifer Franz. Has resigned from the planning commission and, uh, the application process opened through tomorrow. Is that right? February first?
I think so. Letters of interest.
Letters of interest.
Soliciting, considering, we've been cleared for a lot tomorrow.
Thank you. That was way more official.
Very good.
Um. What else? What other updates do we have?
I just wanted to mention, uh, uh, our new engineering firm.
That's exciting.
Yeah, there's always a lot of good information in town management reports, which are available online, so. Think about.
Oh, do you read those?
Almost every word. Almost every word.
Very good.
John, anything?
Nope.
Well, then. Um. With that, we will adjourn.
Good job, everybody.
All right.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah, thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Jen.
Thank you.
Go enjoy your trip.
Thank you, yeah.
How long you gone, Bill, for a month?